Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 28th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the free public for which the stand is one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Mayor Quirk, recall the roll, please.
Oh, John. Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat.
President.
Sarah Messenger.
Excused, yes. All right, next we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes, edits in the minutes?
Make the motion we approve the minutes.
The motion approves. There are second.
Second.
Second from Morris. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Minutes are approved. On to old business. First item up is ordinance, actually, excuse me, it would have been ordinance 2022-31, Ordinance Violations Bureau. Unfortunately, our friends at the paper didn't quite get the public announcement in 10 days. It was out nine, so unfortunately, we'll have to hold that again until our next meeting. That's still on the table, so we'll take that up at our December 12th meeting. So, next item up would be ordinance 2022-32, which is establishing a judicial branch for the city of Lebanon. This ordinance is on second reading. Again, just a quick reminder to council, this is essentially the ordinance that reestablishes a city court. It would not go into effect, though, until January 1 of 2024. State law requires that we adopt an ordinance a year prior to the municipal election cycle, which is next year, so then that would give us a chance, the clerk, to elect, or the city, to elect a judge, and then they will be put in place on January 1. So, but we have to do this ordinance this year to kind of start that process going. So, again, we've talked about in the past of our challenges of enforcing our local ordinances without the city court present, hence why we're talking about this ordinance now. So, with that, I'll have Rob read it, and then we'll take comment and have discussion.
Yep, thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2022-32 reestablishes the judicial branch of the city of Lebanon, whereas the city of Lebanon is a duly-formed municipal corporation within the state of Indiana. The city previously established a city court under Indiana law prior to 1978, whereas the city abolished the city court in 2013 by the adoption of ordinance 2013-16, whereas the city now desires to reestablish the city court, which will enable the city officials to effectively respond to the needs of the citizens. Therefore, the foregoing recitals are incorporated by reference. There is hereby established a city court of Lebanon pursuant to Indiana code to be headed and operated by a city judge elected and seated pursuant to Indiana code. Ordinance 2013-16 is hereby repealed, and all other ordinances or provisions not specifically changed shall remain in full force and effect. If any portion of this ordinance is for any reason declared to be unconstitutional or invalid, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. This ordinance is and shall be effective as of the date of passage and notice pursuant to Indiana law.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been read on second reading. Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning ordinance 2022-32?
Good evening. Dirk Shawalter, 418 West Main Street in Lebanon. First, I'd like to thank you for finally taking this action and reestablishing a judicial branch in Lebanon. You say that a judge pursuant to law will then take effect January of 2024. So, in the meantime, I presume we're still under the inability to enforce these ordinances or write citations, or any citations going to be written, while we do not have a court.
No, they haven't been.
Okay. Well, then I would just like to encourage everyone in the community to still follow the ordinances, even though you can't be formally punished for it, and also suggest that while people may be violating ordinance, that the police don't have the ability to issue a citation and enforce it, that contact may still be made, because sometimes people just don't know that they are in violation. And to still instead of having a citation, here is a copy of the ordinance that you're violating, please voluntarily comply. Thank you.
Thanks, Dirk. Any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Would entertain a motion, then, concerning ordinance 2022-32?
I move we approve ordinance 2022-32.
Motion and a second from Mike. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Ordinance 2022-32 is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, is there any other old business from council?
No, sir.
Okay, new business, then. We have a couple of food and beverage requests from the Food and Beverage Committee, so I'll turn that over to John.
Our first representative would be the Shalom House, Lisa Williams.
Good evening. My name's Lisa Williams. I'm the executive director for the Lebanon Community of Shalom. We do business as the Shalom House. We are a homegrown nonprofit here in Lebanon community. We serve Lebanon as well as Boone County. We are excited to announce that next year, 2023, we will be celebrating 20 years of serving this community, so we're pretty excited about that. We are volunteer-run. We are run also by donations from the community. In 2022, the Shalom House has already done over 19,000 meals from our house. We do two community meals a week, every Tuesday from 5:00 to 7:00, and Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00, and we also do the last Thursday of the month from 5:00 to 7:00. The people we're serving community meals to are seniors and low-income families in the community that are struggling and trying to make ends meet. We also have a home delivery program for homebound people, so to qualify for this program, you have to be over 65 with no transportation, or you have to have a serious illness or disability. So, each week, we send out, every Tuesday, 70 to 80 meals within the community, and every Saturday, 70 to 80 meals to homebound folks in the community. This year, we have seen a 12% increase in the meals that we have served from years gone by. Also, with inflation, the cost of food has gone up and, of course, has really strained our budget this year. Our other program is the Shalom Kids' Lunch Program. It is for kids that get free or reduced meals through the public school. So, any school-aged child in Boone County, whether they're in Western Boone, Lebanon, or Zionsville, we make sure that they have a week's worth of take-home lunches, the weeks that schools close for the entire week. So, that's 14 weeks of the year, 10 weeks in the summer, spring break, fall break, and winter break. Already this year, we've served over 4,300 kids, over 23,000 individual lunches. So, each week, in eight different community sites that we do the distributions, the Monday that school is closed, the parents and kids can come pick up their lunches to take home. And in each of those bags, we have five servings of breakfast, we have five entrees for lunches, five snacks, and five fruits and vegetables, as well as a milk voucher that they take home. So, we've seen an 11% increase in that program this year as well. And, of course, we've also really struggled trying to get the food, because a lot of the food we order is not available, so we've had a lot of shifting around and trying to get the food that we need to put in the bags for those programs. And, like I said, over 22,000, over 23,000 meals have gone out this year. So, we would, we have really appreciated your support in the past, and I really appreciate your consideration this evening.
Lisa met with the Food and Beverage Committee on November 22nd. Council members Wheat and Jones and I, as she said, the 23rd of January, first, they'll be 20 years in service to our community. I don't know if she gave, their dining room is now open, which has been closed with COVID in the past. They're open Tuesdays, 5:00 to 7:00, Saturdays, 11:00 to 1:00, and last Thursday of the month, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. She talked about the age group, she's talked about how many people, how many meals have been served, she talked about the percentage increase. The biggest need also, or another need, is volunteers. They're currently really stressed for volunteers, so if there's any organizations or groups out there that would like to volunteer and to help, please get with me or with Lisa. I'll get you in contact with Lisa, so hopefully, we can help out this organization. This is a need, it's not a want. This organization has been in our community for many years. They help our community, they help those that unfortunately are in need, and we recognize that as a city council, we recognize that as a city. Our committee voted 3-0 in favor of a recommendation and a motion to this council tonight. The maximum we can give out is $1,500, and I would like to make a motion this evening for $15,000, I'm sorry, $1,500. Let me rephrase that. To the Shalom House in Lebanon.
We have a motion, there are second.
Second.
Second from Brent. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Lisa, I wish I could have done the other number, but I couldn't.
Next up was the Lebanon Women's Welfare League, Sue Muncy.
Good evening, everyone. Lebanon Welfare League, which Capa Delta Phi sponsors, this is our 85th year of help having help families in need for Christmas dinners. This is all volunteer. We're a philanthropic group. Last year, we served 485, 86 persons. All of our shopping for all the groceries is done in Lebanon. We don't go outside of the city, and we're fortunate to have a local fresh meat place that IGA works with us fantastic. And I'm hoping that you can help us out again this year.
Well, let me start with, thanks, Sue, for coming tonight and speaking, because you told us the other night that you would not speak in front of a crowd, so thanks for coming up tonight. This is the 85th year for the program. She talked about the number of families that they've served. They also have an adoptive family program where individuals or families can also get with their organization and work with them to provide food to families during the Christmas holidays. Let's see, did you mention Breakfast with Santa this year?
No, it's coming up on Saturday. We do Breakfast with Santa. This started back in 1974, and all the proceeds from Breakfast with Santa will go towards the Lebanon Welfare League.
Did we mention the Snowflake Princess Program?
You're really getting to me tonight, John. We sponsor, this is about the third or fourth year for the Snowflake Princess Contest. Young ladies of elementary, they are given canisters, they go around Lebanon and put them in businesses, or they can do it themselves. They pick a, for nonprofit charity, and the, they count money, let's see, I'm getting nervous, John. It depends on how much money they get, who the winner is for the queen. The winner and all of them, 10% of the money that they do get goes towards that nonprofit, like the Humane Society. You know, that's, we've been very fortunate. We have seven young ladies this year that are competing in the contest, and they will be in the parade.
We wish them the best. Real quick, what they do is they give a certificate to a family. Most of the food or all the food will come from the Lebanon area. The baskets will, they can get ham or turkey, vegetables, they get an IGA certificate for the food, I'm sorry, for the meat, they get the two vegetables, mashed potatoes, stuffing, cakes. The one thing I thought was a little unique was a couple of the organizations or businesses they went through told them that they could get last year's prices for this year. And so, last year's cans were this big at this particular price, and this year, the cans were this tall, and they were saying prices last year. So, again, it's a need. They've benefited our city, our city's benefited from them for the last 85 years, and they're a great asset to our community, and we really appreciate everything that you do. And with that, our committee, again, met on November 22nd, and when a 3 to 0 recommendation to positive for a motion for $1,500, I said it correctly that time, for the women's league.
We have a motion, there are second.
Second.
Second from Morris. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And last but not least, is the Boys and Girls Club of Boone County, Katie Reasoner.
Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity. First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Gentry and John Messenger, the Police Parks Department. Lebanon had the Second Annual Gravy Chase on Thanksgiving Day. This was Rob Shine's brainchild before the Boys and Girls Club merged with, to become the Boys and Girls Club of Boone County. This was the sixth year in Zionsville and the second year in Lebanon. We had over 300 people in Lebanon, and we switched the route and started it on Main Street, so everyone could see what a great job that you all have done in resurrecting downtown Lebanon and all the additions, and went through the park and came back. I was in Zionsville, so unfortunately, I was not here to see it firsthand, but the pictures and the reports we have back are just fabulous. So, our goal is next year for 500 people to participate, so everyone get their running shoes and start training now. But the Gravy Chase event is our largest fundraiser of the year. The Boys and Girls Club of Boone County has an annual budget of $1.7 million. 65% of that comes through fundraising. For the last four and a half years, I've been the chief fundraising person for the Boys and Girls Club. I've stepped to a part-time position at this point, so I am doing more consulting and special projects, and this is one of my special projects. But a lot of their, our needs are for transportation, our buildings. We have three buildings in three different towns. Our units are in Lebanon, Whitestown, and Zionsville. We own all three buildings. I don't know about you all, but my 50-year-old house has some aches and pains and new things that need to be fixed and updated. The funds that we're requesting would be for our transportation program. We transport kids from the club to the schools for our before-school and after-school care. In addition to before and after-school care, we have summer camps, community projects, and sports. I'm happy to report that our largest registration for basketball has been this year, so people are ready to get their kids involved again. So, we have a new athletic director that just started today for the county, so you'll be seeing him trying to promote more athletic events in the Lebanon community. For the Lebanon transportation program, we have two shuttle buses and a van. We have so many kids in our morning program that we have to do two rounds, so our goal is ultimately, I did ask for $40,000, and John laughed at me, for a new shuttle bus, but the funds that you all would be helping with would be for the maintenance and the gas. We, our budget for those two alone for the Lebanon club are over $10,000. So, we appreciate your consideration, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Katie went, excuse me, met with the Food and Beverage Committee. Some of the things that she talked about was the transportation, but in particular Lebanon, they do the transportation from Boys and Girls Club to Harney and Stokes, Monday through Friday, approximately 100 students per day. They go from 6:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m., from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. On non-school years, they do field trips, one day a week, to the Lebanon Water Park, and then they do six to nine weeks of summer camp. And it's just an awful lot of time that they spend with our, our kids, our children here in the, in our area. So, again, it's a need, it's not a want. I wish I could have given you the, or made the recommendation for 40,000, but I'm restricted on that. But they met with the, the committee and with a 3 to 0 vote for positive, I make a motion for $1,500 to the Lebanon, I'm sorry, the Boone County Boys and Girls, Boys and Girls Club of Boone County.
We have a motion, there are second.
Second.
Second from Mike. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the food and beverage requests. Next item up is ordinance 2022-33. This is city council redistricting ordinance, and this is on first reading. Similar to Congress and legislature, every 10 years, the city council needs to redistrict, and so part of that, with population changes, we need to go out doing this. So, this ordinance is that reading. So, if we do the overhead real quick, guys? This is, hey, John, can you zoom out for us? Sorry, you're my projector guy. There you go.
Unless I put it in the middle of the table, that'd be about the only way.
Maybe just slide that up a little bit more. Let me zoom that part of it. Yeah, there you go. That'll work. All right, so these are the proposed districts for the city council. As we were drafting these, the goal was to essentially use natural barriers such as train tracks, large divider roads, you know, Lebanon Street, as kind of, or also Noble Street down there as well, too. It's kind of the main, kind of dividing lines between the districts. Also, the goal was to get them as close in population as possible. As you can see, District 2, District 3 are only about, you know, one person difference on them, so that was part of the goal with that. So, again, this is ordinance on first reading. I'll have Rob read that for us, please.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2022-33 is for the purposes of establishing council districts, whereas this council has previously adopted maps dividing the city into districts such that residents of the city elect council members pursuant to Indiana code. Indiana law provides that the council must adopt new maps the second year after decennial census is codified in Indiana code. Due to the growth in the population of the city, as represented by the 2020 census, the council districts heretofore created by the ordinance 2012-21 are no longer reasonably compact or no longer equal in population. Whereas, the Office of the Mayor proposed districts using the 2020 decennial census data that prioritize compactness, equal population, contiguity, preserving census blocks, keeping communities of interest together, and using major roads, natural and geographic features as dividing lines. This council has reviewed the proposed districts at an open-door public meeting. In order to comply with Indiana code and the provisions contained herein, this council desires that the council districts for the city should be amended as set forth below. Now, therefore, the maps attached heretofore incorporated as Exhibit A and the beats and bounds descriptions attached heretofore and incorporated as Exhibit B shall be the new council districts for this council of the city of Lebanon as set forth by Indiana code, all of which is adopted this day by this council.
Okay. Ordinance has been read on our first reading. Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning this? All right, again, ordinance has been read on first reading. We'll take that up at our next meeting. Next item up, this was a later addition. There was a mistake on the agenda for, you all received the letter from Kevin about the Wit Road, but that didn't make it onto the agenda, so this is a late addition to this. This is a Wit Road Phase 2 financial commitment letter, and I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you very much. Be brief, this is a letter similar to what you've received from me in the last couple of, couple of years, couple of grant cycles. It's that time of year where we, where the federal highway through the state of Indiana opens up their notice of funding availability for, for rural projects. And so, as we've done the past couple of years, we are submitting a project this year for their, this, their consideration. Last year, we were successful in acquiring grant money for Wit Road Phase 1, which is from Lafayette Avenue to about 150 feet north of Austin Drive, and this is for Phase 2 of that project, which would continue where Phase 1 left off, and go up to and include the intersection of County Road 250 North, or Anderson Lane, as it's referred to inside city limits. Again, this is for fiscal year 2028, so the earliest that this would be available for letting, for bidding, would be in July of 2027. So, we have some time here. No initial financial responsibilities are made, but the overall project budget for this is a little over 6.1 million, and with a federal match of 80% of that, of that figure, and a local match of $1,221,324. So, that is what I'm proposing before you tonight. Again, similar to other projects that we have done, we just need to make a financial commitment that if we are awarded, we will find a way to fund this project, and we've done that in the past through surplus funds. I will say of the three federal, or four federally projects that we've received since I've been here, and in addition to that, of the community crossing funds that we receive every year and those grant applications, not one of those projects has caused for any increased tax liability on the citizens. Those have all been funded, funded through year-to-year budget appropriations and surplus funds that we carry, and I would anticipate nothing different with this project when it becomes due in, at the earliest, July of 2027.
Any questions for Kevin concerning this letter?
No, sir.
Would entertain a motion, then, to approve the Wit Road Phase 2 financial commitment. Left her.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Wit Road Reconstruction Phase 2 letter of commitment for this project.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Keith. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That is approved. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for your consideration. I will start the letter here off with Keith. If we could pass this down and just leave it at the end of the table, I'll pick it up at the end of the night.
Okay. All right, Matt, now you're up. All right, next item up, ordinance 2022-34. Council to consider a partial right-of-way vacation for Ann Street. This ordinance is on first reading.
Good evening, council. Tonight, we have before you, as the mayor mentioned, a petition for a partial right-of-way vacation request. If we pull the aerial up here, we're on the, the near east side of town here. We have Main Street running east-west along the north side. Ann Street is coming from the nor, yeah, from the north and ends in an alley here near the subject property, so 623 East Main Street. The applicant, Alex Andrews, has requested a vacation of 20 feet of right-of-way that is along the eastern portion of their property. This would allow for the construction of an accessory structure. I think they're, they're going to build a garage, and by vacating this 20 feet would allow them to meet the necessary setbacks that are required based on our unified development ordinance. As you'll see from the aerial here, there is currently 50 feet of right-of-way that is platted for Ann Street. This portion of Ann Street has always acted as an alleyway and will continue to act as an alleyway since it does not continue on to the next public street. So, 50 feet of right-of-way for an alley, typically alleys are platted at 16, 17 feet wide, 50 feet is quite a bit for an alley. So, I'll pull up the next page here, and you can see this line along the eastern portion that then angles back to the southeast corner of the applicant's parcel. This is the area that they're requesting to be vacated. Again, it's 20 feet out of 50, so that would leave 30 remaining feet for the alleyway, which is more than sufficient for any future maintenance needs that, that would be required on that alleyway. As part of the review process for, for any vacation request, there is a technical advisory committee review. The city of Lebanon Utilities Sewer and Water Division reviewed it and have no utilities located in the subject right-of-way that would be impacted by the vacation request. The Electrical Division also did not have any facilities that would be impacted. The city of Lebanon Fire Department had no issues with the vacation requests, as they typically don't use alleys to access properties, and then the city of Lebanon Street Department was And then the City of Lebanon Street Department was consulted, and they had no, no issues with the vacation request. So, again, tonight before you is a request for approximately twenty feet of right-of-way along six twenty-three East Main Street. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for council from Matt?
No, sir.
Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-four concerns this council's ability to vacate public ways. Whereas it's a duty and responsibility of this council to maintain public rights of ways for the benefit of the citizens of the city and to vacate those no longer needed for the benefit of the public. Whereas, there's been filed before the City of Lebanon Plan Commission a petition to vacate a portion of the public street right-of-way in the Ann Williams Second Edition Platte, specifically a twenty-foot wide portion of Ann Street right-of-way directly east and adjacent to six twenty-three East Main Street, more accurately described in Exhibits A and B. Whereas, the Plan Commission voted nine to zero to send a favorable recommendation to this council for consideration. Whereas, it has come to the attention of this council that the request herein described is no longer necessary as a benefit to the general public and should be vacated. Therefore, pursuant to Indiana Code, the city has authority to vacate public rights of ways and now finds that the public right-of-way identified in Exhibits A and B incorporated by reference is no longer needed for the benefit of the public. After duly advertised in public hearing pursuant to Indiana Code, this council finds it's proper and necessary to vacate the public right-of-way identified in Exhibits A and B. The conveyance of the real estate shall be to Alexander and Kimberly Andrews, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana Law.
That's right, okay. So there will be a public hearing at our next meeting on December twelfth, but at this time, if there's any public comments, please step forward, state your name for the record. Seeing none. Any discussion from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Ordinance has been round on first reading. Again, we'll take that up at our next meeting, December twelfth. Next item up, ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-five. Council to consider a partial right-of-way vacation for Superior Street.
Very similar ask, again, on this next one. We are now on the southwest side of town, along Superior Street. We have Coombs along the west, Ryan Street running along the east. You'll see the, the portion in question here, parcel in question is in yellow. Historically, this yellow portion was used for the interurban railroad that ran through the city. When that railroad was ended, that vacated portion of property was then given to the Superior Street right-of-way. So now we have sixty-six feet of right-of-way in this area for Superior Street. The applicant, David Gilman of ME Rental Properties, that, that owns the four parcels to the north, is looking to potentially develop single-family residential homes along this parcel, and has requested a vacation of eighteen feet of right-of-way in order to help accommodate the single-family homes that they intend to build, or hope to develop on this particular property. So again, you have eighteen feet of the sixty-six feet, which would leave forty-eight feet of right-of-way, which would be more than sufficient for the necessary road upgrades and the addition of sidewalks that would be required should they, they build single-family residential here. They would be required to upgrade the street to accommodate both two-way traffic as well as sidewalks in the area. So, again, the application goes through the TAC review. We do have, the City of Lebanon Utility Department did identify a sanitary sewer line that does run through the, the proposed vacation area. So, the sanitary sewer division did indicate a twenty-foot easement must be recorded with a replat of the lot should this vacation be approved. The Electric Division had no utilities in the area that would be impacted. The City of Lebanon Fire Department had no issues with this request, and the Street Department also had no issues with this request. So again, before you, comes to you with approval with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission for eighteen feet of a partial right-of-way vacation.
Okay. Any questions from Matt from council?
Matt, so we're, we're leaving the sewer easement in there?
Correct. There was a requirement, there was a condition upon the approval in that a twenty-foot easement within the vacated right-of-way to accommodate the existing sanitary sewer line.
Okay. So going back to that map, there's the yellow box. Does the city, is that the right-of-way for Superior Street south of that? Or is this just cutting a swath through the property that they own otherwise?
This, this parcel that is in yellow here is the old interurban rail line, which now is part of the Superior Street right-of-way. So that, from the top of the yellow line, all the way down to where my cursor is down here, is all city right-of-way.
Okay. So really, just having the property line, though, they wouldn't be able to build anything in it, but they'll be able to count the setbacks, including that, really. So they're not gonna be, there's no structures can be built on that, but it changes where they count their setbacks from.
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions from Matt?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll have Rob read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-five, again, concerns an ordinance to vacate public ways. Whereas it's a duty and responsibility of this council to maintain public right-of-way for the benefit of the citizens of the city and to vacate those no longer needed for the benefit of the public. Whereas, there's been filed before the City of Lebanon Plan Commission a petition to vacate a portion of public street right-of-way in the Halls Edition subdivision, specifically a eighteen-foot wide portion of Superior Street right-of-way directly south and adjacent to seven zero two, seven ten, and seven fourteen West Superior Street, and seven nineteen West Pearl Street. That's all described in Exhibits A and B. The Plan Commission voted nine to zero to send a favorable recommendation to this council for consideration. Whereas it has come to the attention of this council that the request described herein is no longer necessary as a benefit to the general public and should be vacated. Therefore, pursuant to Indiana Code, this city has this authority to vacate public rights of way and now finds that the public right-of-way identified in Exhibits A and B incorporated herein by reference is no longer needed for the benefit of the public. After duly advertised and published public hearing pursuant to Indiana Code, council finds it's proper and necessary to vacate the public right-of-way identified in Exhibits A and B. The conveyance of the real estate shall be to ME Rental Properties LLC. And again, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana Law.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been round on first reading. Again, we'll have the public hearing at our next council meeting on December twelfth, but there's no public comment at this time concerning this ordinance. All right, any final comments from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five has been read on first reading. We'll take that up at our next meeting. All right, next up is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six. Council to consider a PUD rezone for Onyx Point. This is also on first reading.
All right, council, moving to the north side of town now. We are up on North State Road thirty-nine. As you can see, on the east side of the road is Witham Hospital. On the west side is the proposed parcel. The applicant is requesting a PUD rezone, the, in order to develop the subject property, the infill, the infill project of seventy single-family townhomes, two-story townhomes contained in twelve buildings along the cul-de-sac. Pull up the exhibit here that shows the, the development, the concept plan that they have in place. As you can see, there is a single point of entrance off Lebanon Street on the east side here, a single road cul-de-sac, twelve buildings, as I mentioned, seventy luxury townhome rentals. They would be two-story, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units. Each unit would have a single-car garage, as well as a driveway that would accommodate two vehicles, so there'd be three parking spaces per unit. They've also accommodated guest parking towards the entrance of the property, along the detention pond, as well as in the back along the park amenity area. They do have a maintenance building and dumpster area proposed in the rear. Pull up some elevations here so that you can see what they're proposing, the architectural details. I know these are kind of hard to see. So as I mentioned, there would be twelve buildings. Each building does have a landscape plan associated with it, which would have trees and shrubs separating each driveway. They would also have trees and shrubs separating each building, and they've also planned for a perimeter of trees in the perimeter buffer that is required in the PUD ordinance. The application for the PUD district and the standards were provided out, provided to everyone, which details all the proposed standards, including the minimum living area, the setbacks, the perimeter setback. We talked about architectural landscaping. The applicant has provided character exhibits, as we see here, that represent design for the proposed townhouses, more of a modern design with brick and fiber cement products as the primary facade materials. The applicant's proposing to meet all the architectural standards for the multifamily zoning district, which I did skip over that. The underlying zoning district for this area would be MF or multifamily zoning, so that would determine the uses associated with this parcel. Jump back one screen here. We can see the comprehensive plan does indicate a, the potential use of this as mixed-density residential, but it's zoned as commercial use. Because of the limited frontage, commercial application would be highly unlikely simply because a long, narrow lot is not ideal for commercial construction. Normally want more frontage along the state road. So the comprehensive plan does, thus, the proposal does represent a most likely development outcome for this particular parcel. Throughout the review of the criteria, the review of the current conditions and character of the area, we have institutional and commercial across the street in the hospital. We have multifamily and residential to the north. We have institutional with the church to the west, and then to the south, we have commercial with the bank, and some residential that is both, or residential that's county, and then also some planned business commercial home, or, sorry, homes that are on planned business commercial zone parcels. So we got a good mix in the area, so the, adding the mixed-density townhomes to this area would fall within the current conditions and character. As we go through here, responsible growth and development. The proposed site is across the street from Witham Hospital and just north of the primary shopping areas in the community. The site's served by existing utilities and would represent responsible growth and development in the area. And we also talked about the land use. Again, it's zoned commercial, looking to do mixed-density residential here instead, simply because of the lack of marketability for commercial use. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on this particular PUD rezone request.
Any questions for Matt this time?
No, sir.
Yeah, we're gonna put twelve buildings on that long, narrow piece of property compared to the apartments to the north, which have fewer buildings and actually a little bit bigger piece of property. Does the density give you any pause?
Not at all. Density, when we talk about density, the, the fit for the area is what? As long as we can accommodate the traffic, we can accommodate the parking, we can accommodate the utilities. Density is not of, of a high concern when you're talking about this particular area, when it's served by existing utilities, existing drainage, water, sanitary sewer all comes out there. So, it, it is more intense than the multifamily to the north, but not any more intense than what would give us concern as far as staff of the planning office.
Any additional questions? Rob, have you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-six is an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Lebanon. Whereas this council has previously adopted ordinance zero seven dash one-six, which is the Lebanon Unified Development Ordinance pursuant to Indiana Code. The City of Lebanon is subject to the Unified Development Ordinance. The City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission considered petition docket number twenty-two dash sixty-nine filed with the commission requesting an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance in the zoning map with regard to the real estate that's described in Exhibit A. The commission forwarded docket twenty-two dash sixty-nine after a public hearing held on November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two to this council with a favorable recommendation by a vote of nine to zero in accordance with Indiana Code. The secretary of the commission certified the action of the commission to this council on November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. This council is subject to the provisions of Indiana Code concerning any action on this request. Now therefore, be entertained that this council, meeting in regular session, that has decided that the Unified Development Ordinance in zoning map are hereby amended as follows. This is several pages, and as we've done before, and as Mr. Reynolds indicated, I'll just hit the highlights. Section one turns, discusses the applicability of the ordinance. Section two addresses the definition. Second, section three addresses the concept plan, and the concept plan is attached as Exhibit B, as Mr. Reynolds described earlier. Section four addresses the underlying zoning districts. Section five is the permitted uses. Section six is the overlay districts. Section seven discusses the general regulations. Section eight addresses the development standards. Section nine addresses the design standards. Section ten addresses the streets standards. Section eleven addresses permitting and procedures. And that concludes this ordinance, first reading.
Thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been round on first reading. Again, we'll take that up at our next meeting. Is there any public comment at this time concerning ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-six? Okay. Any final comments from council?
No, sir.
Again, we'll take that up in the next meeting. All right, next item up, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven. Council to consider a UDO text amendment for the LEAP zoning district. This ordinance is on first reading. Ben?
Evening, council members. Let me pull up a few items here. Give me just a second. Very good. Okay, this first item that I'm gonna discuss here tonight is a text amendment to our Unified Development Ordinance. This text amendment is interrelated with the next item on our agenda, the Phase Two annexation for the LEAP Innovation District, and I'll get into why they're interrelated here in a moment. But just to kind of give you a little bit of background on this text amendment, as many of you are probably aware, the Boone County hired a consultant late summer, Rundell Ernstberger, to help them with the creation of a PUD ordinance that would provide regulations for the LEAP Innovation District, both within the city and in the county. We've been working with them since that time on the, the development of that, that ordinance. The, the goal when that started in late summer was to have something for consideration before the end of the year on the PUD ordinance. That may have been an aggressive goal in order to have that entire PUD ordinance done by the end of the year. There's a lot that goes into that. It obviously deals with regulating uses, development standards, landscaping, lighting, et cetera, but it also gets into utilities, transportation, infrastructure, and those things. It's a very comprehensive look, and I think while the goal was to have that prepared and for consideration before the end of the year, that was, that was probably a pretty aggressive goal. So around about late August, we had our first meeting with Rundell Ernstberger to talk about that PUD ordinance. So it's been a few months now that we've been looking at that. We got to about mid-September, and as we were evaluating the schedule and trying to get something done before the end of the year, we recognized that it was gonna be challenging to get that PUD ordinance done before the end of the year. And the timing is really related to, to leads that are coming in and are looking in this area and are working their way through their site selection process. Those leads, in many cases, the, the first two boxes they check on their site selection process are, is the land annexed and is it zoned properly for my use? And many times, the, the site gets thrown in the trash if those boxes can't be checked, or, or they can't, there can't be a commitment in time for them before they would make a commitment to the site. Several of those leads are, are within thirty days of making a decision on a site. So as we're looking at trying to get something in place before the end of the year that would accommodate those uses, we recognize that PUD ordinance wasn't gonna be ready in time. So we kind of changed directions a little bit while, I, I say changed directions, all of the work that had done by that time for the PUD ordinance is, is relevant to this, the creation of this LEAP zoning district we're gonna discuss here tonight. We're not recreating anything that we weren't already underway. What we need to do then, though, is look at ways for the city to adopt a new zoning district that allowed for those sites to be marketed for those uses and to make commitments on those sites, but provided us, the city, the protections that we desired in order to achieve the goals of the LEAP, LEAP Innovation District. So that's what we really looked at here, is the creation of very, very targeted and specific uses that would be permitted and/or conditional, and not permitting the uses that we did not expect to be here, did not desire to be here. So if you look at the use table for the LEAP zoning district, it's very targeted, it's a very short list of permitted uses. There are a number of uses we typically There are a number of uses we typically would require industrial zoning districts we did not want to be here. So we really focused on that list. And then we also looked at setbacks and buffer standards to make sure that we had appropriate setbacks and buffers to, again, achieve the goals that we expected this area and the quality that we expected in this area. Here in a moment, I'll, I'll walk through what we're proposing and then also kind of show you the difference between the LEAP zoning district and our general industrial zoning district, which is the other zoning district that we had contemplating applying to the annexation area. So about mid-September, we started working with Rundell Ernstberger to develop the LEAP zoning district. The goal here all along was for the city and the county to have similar standards. We wanted them to be applied in a similar manner to both a, a property that was within the city jurisdiction, also within the county jurisdiction. So actually, Rundell Ernstberger worked on the first draft of the LEAP zoning district and presented it to me, I believe it was probably mid-October, when we started reviewing it with them and reviewing the standards. In that first draft, there were a number of things that, that we weren't comfortable with as staff in terms of the uses that were permitted. And in fact, we, we eliminated probably close to 10 uses that were originally identified as permitted. We moved some to conditional uses and some we did not allow at all. So there was a, a number of changes to the uses permitted just to make sure we're achieving the goals we have for the Innovation District. And then also, we reviewed and, and made a number of suggestions to the setbacks and to the buffer yards, again, just to strengthen those standards, to make sure we're achieving the setbacks we desired, but then also the landscape buffer and the, and the implementation of those landscape buffer that we desired. The county, Rundell Ernstberger presented an initial draft to the area plan commission, the county area plan commission, on November 2nd, so almost four weeks ago. And about that time, they did post the draft. At that time, there was, there was, had been prepared at that time to an online website and requested comments. The city, at that same time, were working our way through sending out notices associated with our text amendment that went to the plan commission for a public hearing, and will be here, before you hear tonight. We did send out those, send out those required notices. We posted our draft on November 15th, so about two weeks ago, and they were available for review and/or comment. And then now we're here, two weeks later, here for tonight to introduce it to you. So that's, that's just a rough schedule. I have not directly received any comments on the text of the draft to this point. I believe the county has received a handful of them to their draft. There has been some updates to both the drafts, once, once we reviewed it with the county, but that's, that's all been driven by the city and the county in terms of creating that, the, the language of this LEAP zoning district. So with that, I'll go into a little bit more detail and show you what's being proposed here. Let me scroll down. Kind of get to the meat of this here. So this shows you permitted uses and conditional uses within the LEAP zoning district. As you can see here, the list is not terribly long, and it's very, very focused on, on the uses. We in fact had to create probably about a dozen new definitions for the warehousing industrial uses, because we wanted to be very specific. We didn't want to just put advanced manufacturing on there. We wanted to specifically identify the types of manufacturing that we would permit out here. And same goes for research and development, those sorts of things. We wanted to be very, very specific and not just allow general manufacturing, wanted to focus on those that we wanted to see. So as you look through here, we got things like aerospace product and parts manufacturing, motor vehicle manufacturing, again, I think primarily focused on the electric vehicle market, medical and diagnostic laboratories, pharmaceutical and medicine manufacturing, semiconductor and other electronic component manufacturing. So again, as you can kind of see here, I won't read them all, but you see here, they're very, very focused on specific industry markets. We, we did not want, we did not want a broad classification. We wanted to make sure that we were very specific about the types of uses that we wanted to see out here and those that we didn't. On the conditional side, there are some things that we felt like might be appropriate uses, but we wanted an additional level of review associated with that. Things like battery manufacturing, there may be a component of that industry that would be appropriate, but when you look at the broad, the definition of battery manufacturing, that could be anything from lead-acid batteries for, you know, auto batteries to AA batteries that Duracell produces. So those are things we're not really looking at. We're really looking at that kind of emerging technology part of that industry. So we wanted conditional uses. That gives us an additional layer of review. It has to go to the Board of Zoning Appears for review and approval. So we made sure that we had an additional layer of review to look at those things where there might be some component of that industry that was appropriate, but others that would not be. And that gives us the ability to do that. So in terms of the setbacks that were proposed, I'll get into that a little bit here. Some of these standards mimic the ID zoning district standards. A couple of changes here. One, we have increased the maximum height. You'll see here, the, the maximum height is 250, but I'll get into a, a little bit of information here in a second, how, how that works, because the front, side, and rear setbacks all, all change depending on how tall the building is. And I'll scroll down and show you that chart here. So what we wanted to do is we wanted to look at adjacent uses as it related to setbacks. So I'll go straight, straight down to the industrial uses, because primarily in the LEAP zoning district, we're talking about industrial uses. So, for example, an industrial use where there is an existing residential use or zoning district adjacent, the setback is 400 feet, and that is for a building up to 75 feet tall. If there is a proposal for a building taller than 75 feet, for every one foot, the building is taller than 75 feet, their, their setback increases by five feet. So for example, if someone was proposing a 175-foot-tall building, that is, that is 100 feet over 75 feet, so their setback would increase by 500 feet to a total of 900 feet. And those, those setbacks are significant. And we really wanted to make sure we're providing protection for those existing residents out there. Or in some cases, it, within the LEAP Innovation District, there are going to be residential areas. We want to make sure to protect those proposed residential areas as well. So what we really wanted to do is make sure that we are providing those protections and increasing those setbacks as those building gets taller, to make sure that, to minimize the impact. We're certainly not going to get rid of any impact visually, but certainly to minimize those. And couple that then with our buffer standards that would be required. There are a couple of components of that, and I'll, I'll skip to, there's, there's three different buffer components. One would be a street buffer component. Anywhere where we're on a street classification of a collector or hire, so collectors and arterials, there would be a buffer requirement along there that would include mounding, landscaping. They could provide detention, retention facilities there, water bodies within that. But we're really making sure that any activity related to the use is significantly setback from the road, and then is also buffered with those, those mounds and landscaping. The second component of is a, is a district perimeter buffer. So again, as you kind of look at the overall plan, and we'll look at the overall concept plan here in a little bit with the annexation, on areas where you're on the perimeter of that district, there is a significant buffer requirement where you're going essentially from what would be LEAP Innovation District to areas outside that would be, still be in the county. We require with this text amendment a 1,500-foot district perimeter buffer, so a little over a quarter of a mile. And within that district buffer, again, there's a mounding requirement, there is a tree requirement, again, to provide that significant buffer. So again, no activity related to use, not even a parking lot or a driveway, could be within 1,500 feet of the property line. The final item there would be related to uses. So again, we have established two new buffer yards. I'll show you here our existing buffer yards. Our most substantial buffer width to this point is 25 feet, and we did not think that that was substantial enough for the LEAP zoning district. And so we created two new buffer standards, one is 75-foot and one 125-foot buffer requirement, which you see established here. The 75-foot buffer yard requires every 100 feet, 24 shade or evergreen trees, and 45 shrubs every 100 feet. The 125-foot buffer includes a 6-foot berm and then those same planting requirements, again, a little bit more substantial buffer there. And then if you use those standards, kind of going down this chart, again, I'll, I'll go straight, straight to the industrial. So industrial residential requires that 125-foot buffer yard in addition to the setbacks that would have those, those planting requirements there. So you'd have a, you'd have 125-foot buffer with mounded landscaping, and then the setback, depending on the height of the building, will be at least 400 feet in addition to that 125-foot buffer. Again, really trying to create those protections that we want to see out here that are not in our existing ordinance. To go to that comparison chart then, this is a comparison of the LEAP zoning district to our general industrial zoning district. And I, and I'm comparing here industrial, industrial uses. So the front setback in the general industrial zoning district right now is a minimum of 100 feet. And the LEAP zoning district will start at 300 feet and go up from there. So in some cases, that setback may be over 1,000 feet. So in some cases, three times, if not maybe 10 times or more, what the existing setbacks are. Side and rear setbacks in general industrial are 50 feet, and this would be where there would be an internal property line. Again, 300-plus feet, depending on the height of the building. So again, we're increasing six times, if not more than, more than 10 times, depending on the size of the setback. Maximum height right now is 50 feet. And again, as I mentioned, we have a 75-foot height limitation based on the setbacks. And then if you go, you could theoretically go up to 250 feet, but your setback gets, gets wider and wider the taller the building gets. So we have increased the maximum height. Again, looking at some of the industries, they do have increased building heights over 50 feet. 50 feet is kind of a traditional warehouse anymore. A lot of manufacturing uses are really trying to go vertical as opposed to horizontal. It costs more to make buildings bigger when you can go taller. The street buffer right now in the general industrial is 20 feet with 30 trees and 45 shrubs. And we would be proposing 150 feet, so again, significantly larger buffer width with many more tree and shrub plantings and berm requirements. Industrial residential buffer right now is 25 feet with eight trees and 15 shrubs, and we're going to 125 feet, including a berm and 24 trees. So again, really trying to increase those standards to really create the quality and aesthetic we're looking for in this, in this LEAP zoning district. So this comes to you with a positive recommendation from the plan commission, eight-to-one vote to establish these standards for the LEAP zoning district. This is the first reading tonight, so up for any, available for any questions you might have relating to this?
Any questions for Ben from council?
How tall, how many stories is a building that's?
Mike, can you get my phone?
How many stories is a building that's 150 feet?
Depends on the floor plate, but it's approximately maybe a 12-story building. So for example, the New Cold's building is approximately 140, 150 feet tall that's out in the Lebanon Business Park. US cold storage, I believe, is 110 or 120 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of things. First, I'll ask the probably most trivial question to get asked tonight. Why are roadside sales stands okay as a permitted use? We're going to have a firework stand out there?
Yeah, no, I think really what, what we're looking for is to try to mimic standards of both the city and the county, and that was something the county wanted to make sure was included. Some of the existing farms out there may do roadside sales stands. So we went, again, we just wanted to mimic what was already, what was, what the county was going to permit in their district. I don't expect to see many roadside sales stands within the park that's annexed to the city, but it was just something where we wanted to make sure that we, we carried the same standards over from the county's ordinance.
Okay. And the other question that I've been asked is, does any of this address any tillable ground? Can that be part of any of the setback buffer, any of that?
Yeah, so the short answer is yes. I think, I think what we, what, and, and just for example, Eli Lilly is looking at on their site, they have a 600-acre site right now, they're only proposing to develop about 300 or 400 acres of that. So they had asked if along the northern property line, they could leave part of that tillable acreage until such time that they come back and decide they want to develop it at some point in the future. And we've suggested that they needed to provide the improved buffer that we require, but the remainder of it could be tillable acres. So we wanted to make sure that the buffer was going to be established regardless of what the rest of the property was used for. And that would be the same as any of these properties here. We have no problem with those remaining tillable acres that's actually permitted within the LEAP zoning district. We just want to make sure those perimeter buffers have been provided as required.
Any additional questions?
No.
Okay. This time I'll have Rob read the ordinance, and I will have public comment on this afterwards as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Ordinance 2022-37 concerns an ordinance amending the text of the Unified Development Ordinance of the City of Lebanon, whereas the City of Lebanon Plan Commission initiated and proposed an ordinance amending the text of the Unified Development Ordinance of the city. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the City of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission conducted a required public hearing and determined its favorable recommendation on November 21st, 2022 by an eight-to-one vote, and then after certified its recommendation to this council on November 22nd, 2022. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council has considered the proposed text change amendment along with the recommendation of the City of Lebanon Plan Commission, and now adopts the amendment and approves this ordinance amending the text of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, this council finds as follows. It amends the text of the Unified Development Ordinance specifically Chapters 4, 7, 11 as described in Exhibit A. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage in accordance with Indiana law. Mr. Bontrager went through most of the highlights in Exhibit A, but they're well over 50 pages, so I'm not going to read those into the record, but certainly you've received a copy of this.
Thank you, Rob. This time, if there's any public comment concerning ordinance 2022-37, please step forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Glenn Beazey, and I live at 71 South, 200 West, just on the west edge of Lebanon, which is now going to be considered part of this annexation for this LEAP project. I must have missed something because I was at that plan commission, and it was voted four to five.
Sir, this is not the annexation, sir. This is the UDO, UDO overlay, the LEAP overlay district, so that sets all of those rules. It's separate than the annexation. That's up next.
Okay, then I'll be back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Andriely?
Yes, for the record, Mike Andriely, 1393 West Oak Street. I'm an attorney representing the Boone County Historic Preservation Group. In addition, I've listed and sent to the, your clerk, the letter of representation with regard to a number of interested parties that, that received notice of not only the annexation, but the fact that you're creating this new LEAP district. They didn't get notice of that, but they got notice of the annexation. But I did want to make a, a comment about the proposed new LEAP designation and your text changes. Generally, we applaud the work that was done by Mr. Bontrager and by the county in trying to work through this process. We felt that rather than be part of the objection, we try to be part of the solution and have been working with the county authorities in that regard. In fact, we have a meeting with them this Wednesday to go over some of the county drafts and some of our concerns with regard to that. Just so we're clear, however, when you saw the, the schematic of the setbacks from the industrial, it was industrial to residential. That does little good for the people that live out there now. This ground is zoned agricultural, and they may have houses on it. So if it's, if it's from in the LEAP district to a residential district, and that's the zoning classification, it does little to protect the people that live out there now that are in an agricultural classification but simply live on the property. So there's, there's, seems to be no help for those people, only if, if it applies to the LEAP district versus a residential district. Unfortunately, all the ground that's out in that area that's being sought to be annexed is, for the most part, as I understand it, an agricultural district. Just one concern that I want to raise with regard to the particular wording of the proposed text change. Other than that, I'll save my comments for the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Ben, to clarify, is that a, it's based on use, not zoning? Is that correct?
Yeah, the intention there is it's based on existing use, not necessarily zoning district. So if there is an existing residence?
Yeah, that satisfies a lot because the purpose wasn't really clear on whether it was use versus?
We, we base it off of use, not on zoning.
Yeah, in this, in this case, it's based off of use. So if there's an existing homestead out there, regardless of it's zoned agricultural, residential, there, it would receive those same protections as though, as a residential use.
Okay, thank you, Ben.
Yep.
Any further public comment? Any final thoughts, questions from council?
No.
Okay. At this time then, ordinance 2022-37 has been round our first reading. We'll take that up at our next meeting, December 12th. All right, and the last item here on agenda tonight is ordinance 2022-38, council to consider the LEAP district Phase Two annexation. This is on first reading.
All right. The wake the computer back up here first. The wake the computer back up here first. related to the Phase 2 annexation of the LEAP Innovation District. This annexation is approximately 5,200 acres. As you go, you see on the map here, and so again, a little hard to determine exactly the scale, so I'll point out some, some landmarks here. Interstate 65 is just off the map here to the right. State Road 32 is running westbound, and there's the curve in State Road 32. 500 West is roughly this western boundary. You see here this angled property through here is the Big Four Trail as it extends out through this area right now. US 52 is what you see heading to the northwest here, so that orients you a little bit to what this area is. Again, as I mentioned, it's about 5,200 acres. This is a 100% voluntary annexation, meaning we have petitions requesting annexation to the city from all property owners within this area, and that is part, essentially why you see some holes in this area. These are property owners that have not requested annexation, so they were not included. So anybody, anybody who did not desire to be annexed was not included in this annexation. As we have talked about in the past, we really only consider 100% voluntary annexations. We're not gonna annex anybody that doesn't want to be annexed. So these property owners that you see here have all requested and signed petitions for annexation, 100% voluntary. Just kind of again, walking back through the process, if you recall, a few months ago, we had a Phase 1 annexation, about 1,400 acres that you see represented just off the edge of the map here in kind of this yellowish-greenish color. And Eli Lilly was part of, was part of that area, about 600 of the 1,400 acres at the very north end of the site. This, this site here, the reason for this request coming before you now, again, as I mentioned previously, there are leads that are making, that are looking to make site selection decisions within the next 30 to 60 days. And part of their requirement in order to make that decision is annexation and zoning of that property according to their desired needs in terms of the use that they're proposing. So that is why this annexation is coming for you here now. As I mentioned, this is also interrelated to the text amendment that we just discussed a moment ago. The desire from the city's perspective, even though the petition came in requesting the general industrial zoning classification similar to what was done at the last annexation, was to establish that LEAP zoning district and apply it to this annexation because we felt like those standards were more appropriate, provided again, those uses that we wanted to see in there and the protections from the setbacks and buffer yards that we wanted to see within this annexation area associated with the LEAP district. So that's why these are coming before you at the same time, as the desire is to adopt that LEAP zoning district and apply it to this annexation area. What I'll show you here in a moment, kind of walks through how this would be divided up. So the primary area that's being evaluated for these leads that are coming in is this area that you see in this, I'll call it a pink color because I don't have a very diverse color wheel. This pink color, the proposal here would be to establish the LEAP zoning district on this area, as it's the primary area being considered for these leads that are coming in. The area to the north of the trail, that the IDC will get into their concept plan here in a moment, it's more of a mixed-use amenity area that could include higher education, could include services, other support services, hospitality, and those sorts of things. So it's a mixed-use district. The city doesn't really have a mixed-use zoning district, so we've suggested to them is for the, for the time being, let's, let's establish this as the base zoning district as SF, with the understanding that the PUD ordinance, when it's done sometime the first quarter of next year, it would more, it would more, it would do a better job of describing what, what was permitted within that mixed-use area, since we don't really have a zoning district to apply. So that's, that's really how it's, the differentiation between the two in terms of what was requested in terms of zoning. I'll let, the state has a presentation here in a moment that they'll walk through their concept plan, the justification support for their zoning requests. They have provided both a land use map, which I have here, and then also a build-out concept. Again, it's very high-level conceptual. They're looking at really the types of uses that might come out here, how it might build out. There's no defined user yet. Hopefully, we have some defined users within the next few months, but for right now, they're really looking at a high-level build-out concept of how they're gonna manage the creeks and drains around the area, how they're gonna manage the thoroughfares, the types of users, and what their buildings might potentially look like, and how they might develop the sites. And again, really applying those, those buffer yard standards and how that, how that gets applied in that area. In terms of the simple land use graphic, that they'll go into much more detail about this here in a moment, but I'll just highlight a few things here. This is the overall LEAP Innovation District area. This is not the annexation area. This is an area that's larger than the annexation area. But the annexation area is primarily in this purple color that is the innova, it's really the mega site Innovation District area, which would be more focused on industrial, research and development, manufacturing, advanced manufacturing. What you see here in this, I'll call it a light orange color, is really that amenity area, that mixed-use area that's focused around the Big Four Trail and US 52. And then you get into advanced manufacturing and R&amp;D as you go north and to the east of US 52. So again, as I mentioned, the IDC has a much more detailed concept plan they'll go to here in a moment, but I just want to kind of give you the highlights of, of this general concept plan that identifies the uses in support of their zoning request for this area. And just to kind of talk a little bit about, you know, the concept plan that's required as part of an annexation, we do require land uses to be identified, and then also it suggests that provide road layouts and utility layouts. As you can see here, they've got a general road layout, and when you get in, they'll show you the more detailed build-out concept, again, you'll see more detail associated with that. In terms of utilities, they have not provided that at this time within the district area. Those will be identified once users are identified. For example, I mean, we're fairly certain that utilities will follow roadways because that's the most efficient way to get to the sites. But in terms of sizes of pipes right now, because their users are not identified at this point, it's a little challenging to identify size of pipes. So if it's a user that needs 1 million gallons of water per day, they may need a 20-inch water line. If it's a user that needs 5 million gallons per day, they may need a 24 or 30-inch water line. So to provide concepts on what those, those pipe locations and size would be challenging at this point until those are further defined as the development starts to progress. And that's very similar to how other developments are brought into the City of Lebanon. For example, Duke, when they brought in Lebanon Business Park 30 years ago, they had a concept identified for that area, but they didn't have users defined. They knew that it was, where they were gonna market it to industrial users, thus the request for industrial zoning, but they had no specific users identified. And frankly, until in the last 12 months, we, we're just now building out the park now. But they do need the zoning in place in order for them to go to the risk and level of investment needed to design roads and utilities and to implement utilities. So it'd be challenging, and I don't know any community that does this, to require a developer, whether it's the state or a private developer, to spend the money to design utilities and implement utilities and market a site that's not zoned appropriately. That's a huge risk to be able to do that and not have an understanding of what the zoning is gonna be for that site, and it's gonna accommodate the, the concept that they're proposing for that area. I'm not, I'm not aware of any developer that would go to that expense until they have an understanding that the city is supportive of the zoning of that site. That's a massive risk and a massive expense to have to do, whether it's a 200-acre site or a 5,000-acre site, it's a huge expense to have to go to the, to that level of design prior to an understanding of the zoning of the site, which is why we're, we're looking at implementing that LEAP zoning district and applying it to this area. That gives them the level of comfort to start to continue to design those utilities and bring those to the area. And again, they'll provide you an update on utilities here in a second, too. Just another quick example. Waterford, this is the concept plan they provided when they came in for their rezoning a couple of years ago. Again, you'll see a very high-level land use plan, very high-level concept of the roads and utilities for, for the site. This was, this was provided as part of their, their PUD rezone request, so they're actually even a step further than where we're at here with the annexation on a site, and this is about 2,000 acres. So again, at the site of this scale, it's, this is what you expect to provide, this sort of land use map and real high-level idea of transportation utilities. You know, as I mentioned, they've actually taken it to further detail and provided a build-out concept they'll go to here in a second. So with that, I think maybe I'll pause and let the IDC run through their presentation for you, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ben. We have Dave Rosenberg from the Indiana Economic Film Corporation tonight for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. We appreciate your consideration of this ordinance for the LEAP district. As Ben mentioned, this is super voluntary. We are respecting property rights. Also, there's been great collaboration between the IDC, the city, and the county throughout the process, as Ben mentioned. I'm not gonna lie, there's been some tense conversations that we've had throughout, as you would expect with a project this big. But we've had almost weekly meetings with local stakeholders over the past eight months. I think we've gotten to a really strong point where this is a marketable development for businesses looking to make the investment to reshore and modernize in the United States as a national security play, and really look forward to continuing this progress with the city and the county. To take us back to kind of the beginning and put this in perspective of why this was started, speed is the new incentive. And so deals that were taking multi-year to get through in terms of site, looking at site surveys, companies picking where they want to go, negotiating that, they would take multi-years. These are now happening in a span of six to nine months, and we have to be ready. We have to have the sites, we have to have the zoning, we have to have the utilities and road network, as Ben mentioned, for companies who are making these multi-billion dollar investments to be able to make that investment and get the return on their investment soon. We're looking at high-wage, high-growth companies, but really what set this off is that we were losing, the state of Indiana, we're losing deal after deal because they were going to other states that had these site-ready initiatives. They had funding from legislature, and they were going out buying land, zoning it, getting utilities and roadways there. And so it was very important that the state stepped into this game. The legislature has supported this move, and LEAP, and Lebanon's the first one, but this is a very long-term strategy for the state to try to play catch-up and get ahead of these other states, so we're not continuing to lose these deals. It's important to note that local officials will continue to have total control over annexation and zoning, hence why we're here this evening. So the vision for LEAP is to, is so focused on high-wage economy of the future as an innovation district. And so this is bio-life sciences, microelectronics, ag tech, with industry average wages north of $100,000 per year. These are not traditional business parks. We're not looking at that. This is a true research and innovation district. No offense to our friends in the business park, this is just has a different focus and a different vision that we're looking at for the LEAP district. These will have research and development lab spaces and a key focus on the aesthetics. Again, not like the business park, as Ben mentioned, but a key focus on the aesthetics, which we'll walk through here soon. But, you know, sustainability, streams, setbacks, walking paths, all those are critically important to, to the vision, the focus of LEAP. Agri-science onsite, working with Wynn and Purdue on potential partnerships, continue to come here, respect the agricultural history of the community. We'll have a Center for Excellence in Training partnering with K-12 institutions, Purdue, Ivy Tech, to make sure those students who want the opportunities in their backyard are able to stay in the area and, and work their cell, work their way into those careers with those high-wage jobs. And again, we'll get into this more here in a little bit, but a long-term utility solution. The state being at the table helps create that opportunity for generational solution for water reliability, to make sure not only the LEAP economic development has to, but all of Boone County wants to tap into the water solution, has that ability, which we do not have currently today. So again, why Boone County? You guys know this better than anyone, but it's a great place to raise a family, live, work, and play, has great proximity to Purdue University, Rose Holman, Ivy Tech locations, access to the Indianapolis labor market, the northern communities, short drive to Indianapolis International Airport, access to rail, access to ports, great road network with logistics and transportation. And so as we were developing this idea, we kind of market-tested it to a lot of different companies that were looking to make investments, and we put this in a, in a kind of lineup with different sites around the state. And this site was the number-one site ranked by all those companies and continues to be a huge draw. It's almost if you build it, they will come. We have had unbelievable response to, to putting forth this effort, and we'll be able to capitalize on some of those here soon. So Ben mentioned the conceptual layout to the northeast there across 65, east of 65 is where Eli Lilly is locating. They'll start to break ground first quarter of next year, continuing to work with them. This next phase is really that, that southwest portion of the, the purple there that is focused on the industrial, the manufacturing, those mega sites that, that'll be located, as Ben mentioned. The yellow along the Big Four Trail is mixed-use residential, the ability to create that place where young talent wants to come live, be the supply, the workforce pipeline to the employers that are in the LEAP district, and that focuses on research, manufacturing, and amenity space as well. As you can see with the aesthetics, there's large setbacks, wooded trails, pathways, streams. Again, really taking, really taking a focus on the aesthetics to not be the traditional business park, but making a place where people want to come, they want to live, they want to grab a cup of coffee, and creating that, that true place that we've seen in other areas like Research Triangle Park and other places that are a real draw for talent that everyone is fighting for today. This is helpful because, so we shrunk where we're looking at the annexation and the overlay district based on the, the conceptual plan. And so you can see, it follows what Ben mentioned. South of the Big Four Trail, we're looking at the, the plan development, again, which has those tighter restrictions than the ID. But north, it'll be SF, more in the mixed-use. And so the proposal before you, the previous ordinance proposal on the zoning closely mirrors what we're talking about in the conceptual plan, and we'll continue to work closely with Ben and his team as that evolves. Again, a little bit of focus on the aesthetics here. As you can see, these are glass, steel buildings, not your traditional warehouse. Even the larger advanced manufacturing has a forward-facing towards the road, glass and steel aesthetic as it goes to the bigger building in the back. We heard loud and clear from the community that, that solar was a hot-button issue, and so we found ways to incorporate it where it's not on the ground, where it's not seen. You can see here in other places where they've had parking and have covered parking with solar on top, killing two birds with one stone, providing covered parking for employees and visitors, but then also allowing access to, to renewable energy. You see stream and corridors, that's in West Lafayette, the bottom-left picture there. Again, taking that aesthetic, walkways, and making it a place where people want to come and jog and walk with their families. And as you can see, some of the setbacks and buffer for the large industrial users well off the road, ponds, and a lot of greenery in front of it as well. Again, stream and corridor trails, as you can see, you know, double roads with three-line pass in the middle of them. On the, on the right is a mixed-use building with utility on, on bottom and residential on top, but it's brick, it's glass, it's steel, it's aesthetically pleasing for people using the district. Again, large setbacks and buffers away from the road for the larger buildings. And then on the right is more of the mixed-use kind of dense part of the area. Again, brick, green space, a place where people want to live, work, play, especially again, that young talent that everyone's fighting for. So here are a few other conceptual renderings. Again, these are conceptual. All of these will change based on what we hear from the market and the needs of the market. So this is looking to the northwest. You see the mega sites on the south side, looking at advanced manufacturing, mixed-use along the Big Four Trail, and then again, on the right side of the picture where Eli Lilly is locating. Another one, a little bit closer in, similar view. Little bit broader. And then again, the mixed-use village character, creating that, that place where people want to come, collaborate, do their work, and continue to stay there with their families. So again, benefits of state involvement. We know it's unusual for the state to be a quote-unquote developer in this space, but again, is a reaction to the market, a reaction to where the economic development deals were going in the country. There's almost a billion dollars of development coming from China as companies look to reshore and modernize after COVID and with the geopolitical tensions that are going on. So it is a true national security play for the state to be involved in this area and try to capture that, that reshoring, that modernization of these companies as they come here in the future-focused areas like microelectronics, bio-life science, electric batteries, those type of things. State being involved, we can bring the resources to assist, again, with the long-term generational water solution. We know this area, not only Boone County or Lebanon, but also down into Indianapolis and throughout, will have a long-term, long-term limit on the water that it can use over the next couple decades. This is a solution that is spurred by economic development, but will not solely be dedicated to the LEAP district. The idea, once we're fully built out, is that communities, projects up and down any pipeline will be able to tap into the water resources to make sure that they can develop and expand. So if Thorntown wants to build out their residential, or if Indianapolis wants to build out their residential, there's opportunity for central Indiana to continue to grow. We know states have, the state has done several studies that shows this water resources. And so again, this is a way economic development is helping spur a solution, not within its four corners, but is a benefit long-term to central Indiana. Also, the road infrastructure improvements with the 300 interchange, state road improvements throughout to attract the traffic flow, that'll be happening as they're coming to, as businesses come online and people come to work or to use the mixed-use village. And then county roads as well, working closely with the county. And then county roads as well, working closely with the county to help improve that traffic flow up and down the line. On the water and wastewater, we're doing this in two phases. The first phase is currently underway as we seek term sheets to deliver nearly 10 million gallons per day over the next 24 to 30 months. We expect this implementation to begin in Q1 of 2023. Phase two, which is the longer-term, broader work with more water being delivered to the site, engineering and design work has begun on that. We expect the procurement process to begin sometime in 2023, hopefully by Q3, and then implementation like to begin late 2023 or early 2024. And again, as Ben mentioned, there are several companies that are looking at this, which is why, you know, we are coming before the council, before the end of the year, so that as we put forth our proposals and as we attract these companies to the site, that they're ready to go, they can make that investment, know they're going to get a return on that investment soon. And so we anticipate decisions by a few different companies. There are two in particular that are very keen on this site, and we are deep in conversations with them, represent significant investment in the multiple tens of billions, one in the EV battery space, one in the microelectronics space. So again, future-focused economies of the future with high-wage jobs that we're trying to keep here in Indiana. And then as Ben mentioned, discussions with the city and county on the PUD will continue, and the end goal by the end of Q1 2023 will be to take out the Plan Development Commission you're approving with the overall long-term PUD that will set the governance and zoning structure for the site for the foreseeable future. So happy to take any questions. Thank you again for your time and consideration of the annexation tonight.
Any questions for David at this time?
Yeah, you say you're going to start some work in second quarter of '23, or the plans, you're going to have some type of plans drawn up?
For which piece, I'm sorry?
For the LEAP district. You said in the second quarter of '23 or the third quarter of '23, you would have some plans drawn up?
For the water wastewater?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Phase One is currently being undertaken with seeking term sheets from suppliers, and we'll start that process to deliver 10 million gallons per day over the next 24 to 30 months. That process will start Q1 2023. For the longer-term water solution, the entire regional water solution, we hope to have the procurement process start in Q2 or Q3 of 2023, and then select a vendor and start implementation of that longer-term plan later 2023 or early 2024.
We say procurement, define that.
Yeah, so finding a vendor to deliver the water supply to the district.
From the Wabash?
So we're undergoing those engineering and design standards right now, so the exact location is still being solidified.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions for David?
I got, I got one comment. I read an interesting article over the weekend, I caught, and it was about a small community out in, I think it was Arizona, and all of a sudden they were, had a great water supply for years. Next thing you know, they're running out of water. And they checked their wells, and they had a very nice, deep well flowing water all the time, and the water was not flowing anymore. And what turned out to be that there was foreign-owned farmland, that the foreign companies were pumping the water out of the offer, you know, to water their land and so forth, and we're using up all the water. My first thought, oh man, I hope that doesn't happen to us. But what are those guarantees that something like that doesn't? I'm not talking about us necessarily, but if we're taking water from someone else, I don't want that to happen from another community. So is there that much water available? You know, I'll say for everyone.
Sure, yeah. First, so water is a state resource, underground water is a state resource. It's closely monitored by our partners at IDIM and throughout the state. I am not a hydrologist. We have hydrologists and consultants on staff that are looking at this. We have been told unequivocally that yes, there is enough water wherever it pulls from, that it will not impact that community, and there will be enough to supply not only the LEAP district, but again, the regional water solution for decades to come. And so I think, you know, what they have said is as long as there is water in the Great Lakes, there will not be a problem, and so I think we're going to be fine for the foreseeable future.
Okay, well, I hope so. May not happen in my lifetime, but I hope it doesn't happen to anybody.
Any additional questions for David?
Yeah, and this is kind of speculative, but I'd just like you to address it. We control zoning, we control uses permitting, that kind of stuff. That's wonderful, gives us local control. What about roadways? State road, you know, it's a state road, we don't have any real input there, but we're talking county roads, which will be city roads if we annex that. Where it's speculative is getting further down, and I don't want to get down into the weeds, but there's some concerns on conceptual plans about traffic flow and how this would work. Can you address how the state intends to work with the local community and make sure our concerns about transportation, because that's one of the big reasons folks are in this room, because we have traffic problems here, and this will exacerbate that?
Sure. Yeah, no, I think it's a great question. So NDOT is our partner, obviously, at the state level that is working on the roads, the conceptual plan, working with our engineers. A lot of the road network will be dictated by which companies locate and which sites within the LEAP district that they locate within. But it's a very fair point, we continue, like I said, have weekly meetings with local stakeholders to make sure we are aligned on those issues, and we will continue to adapt and adjust. You know, I think the program, the process has started with the interchange with 300 and some of those changes, which will alleviate that. We know that's going to cause backups within the system. So it's something that we'll stay in tune with, NDOT will stay in tune with, we're happy to continue to engage with locals to make sure we have that.
Who would pay to build the roads?
What's that?
Who would pay to build the roads?
Yeah, so it's collaboration right now between NDOT and IDC, and so some of that could be financed if certain locations have an ADD that's then reinvested in the district. The ADD is a financial tool that we negotiate with companies. Instead of using our traditional tools, we can use the ADD, which collects the state revenue instead of sending that state revenue back to the state general fund. It has to be reinvested within the district, and so a lot of that financing of future development of the LEAP site could be financed through ADDs as those get spun up. In the initial term, until those are starting to generate revenue, it'll be the IDC, NDOT partnership with the friends at the legislature, and helping fund those roads.
So not locals?
No.
Okay. Additional questions?
Yeah, I've had a few people ask some questions such as, you know, once it's completed, let's say 15 years from now, three-quarters of it is finished, and you look at all these nice-looking buildings and roads and streets and so forth, now the city's problem. So in the tax money, the majority of it, 88%, is going to go to the state, and we're supposed to get 12% of the property tax revenue, is that correct?
So if it's an ADD, that's 12% on top of, that's 12% from the state revenue that would normally go to the state general fund. So the locals are seeing an increase already with that 12%. The 88% that's collected within the ADD has to be reinvested for the benefit of the ADD, or the area, excuse me, the region, where normally it would go back and be in the state's general fund, whereas now it has to be collected and invested into the region. So that 88% is state revenue that's collected by the state within the ADD, but then has to be reinvested back into the region.
Yeah, so you build the roads, the sidewalks and so forth, the city has to take care of it. So how much revenue will the city of Lebanon receive? What's that 12% worth?
Yeah.
You know, we got, we're busy now. Street department's busy, the parks department's busy, everybody's busy, so.
Let me expound upon that a little bit from the local perspective. For example, we've done some initial estimates on Eli Lilly's investment, there's about a $2 billion investment happening there. The 12% pass-through to the city is approximately $1.5 million annually. So that gives you a rough idea, that's almost 10% of our entire city budget coming from one project out here. Some of the other leads are multiple billions of dollars that could generate tens of million dollars in annual revenue for the city. So we will see if it's, even if it's an ADD and we're only seeing a 12% pass-through, we're talking, the scale of the projects means we're seeing millions of dollars. There's one lead that could double the city's annual budget just with their potential 12% pass-through. So there will be significant revenue that will assist with our ability to maintain those roads, et cetera, and provide services in that area.
And also go above and beyond for current city residents as well?
Yeah.
Because it doesn't cost that much to maintain roads out there.
And if I could just tag on, and the PUD will help set out the long-term governance of the LEAP district, and so, you know, in 15 years, the LEAP district governance will still dictate, it's almost like an HOA for the companies that are locating there. So they have to continue with the standards, they're investing in the district, they're helping with the upkeep, so it won't just be, you know, turn over to the city, you guys take care of this. It'll be a long-term governance model that has buy-in from each of the entities that are locating within the district.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? I'll have Rob read the ordinance on first reading. I'm sorry, Ben, did you want to finish? Does anyone else want to say?
Maybe just one additional thing that I didn't address initially, and it's a little bit about the schedule associated with this annexation. I think that we've heard a number of concerns about the speed at which the city is considering this annexation. So the annexation petition was filed on October 31st. Per Indiana Code, Section 36435.1, for 100% voluntary annexation, we were required by law to hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing tonight, no more than 30 days after the filing of that petition. So again, as I mentioned, that petition was filed on October 31st. Today is exactly 29 days after that filing, so we've essentially extended out the schedule for the public hearing as far as we legally can according to the Indiana Code. And that code section also states that the council, the legislature, would need to consider adoption of the annexation or within 60 days of the petition filing. So we would need to consider the petition on the December 12th meeting, which is the upcoming meeting. If we go into January, we're beyond the 60 days where we're legally obligated to consider a 100% voluntary annexation. So again, there's been some concerns expressed, we're following to the T the Indiana Code as it relates to process and schedule to hold this public hearing within 30 days and consider the 100% voluntary annexation within 60 days.
Ben, I got one question on the annexation. What's the state's rules when people apply for voluntary annexation, it has to come before council, city council? What's the state's rules as far as our decisions?
So in terms of 100% voluntary annexation, which is what this is, the first thing we have to evaluate is to make sure that the annexation meets the contiguity requirements. It has to be contiguous to our existing city limits, and it has to be at least 1/8 contiguous, which means that the part that's adjacent to the existing city limits versus the perimeter of the entire annexation area has to meet that 1/8 contiguity requirement, which a land surveyor has certified that this does meet that requirement. Then in terms of consideration, again, there's a specific set of rules associated with a 100% voluntary annexation versus something that would be involuntary. So again, as I mentioned, the council is required to hold a public hearing, which we're doing tonight, within 30 days of receipt of the annexation petition, and the way it's actually stated in there is consider adoption within 60 days. If we don't consider adoption within 60 days, we don't take action, they could actually petition with the courts to enforce the annexation. So it's incumbent upon us to make that decision within 60 days on 100% voluntary annexation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ben? Okay, at this time I'll have Rob read the ordinance, and then we'll have the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, Council Ordinance 2022-38 is an ordinance of this council annexing certain territory to the city of Lebanon. Whereas the owners of approximately 5,225 acres of land located in unincorporated Boone County but contiguous to the city, that's defined as the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area, have petitioned to have their land voluntarily annexed into the city of Lebanon. Whereas this council is legally authorized to annex lands that qualify for annexation as defined by Indiana Code, and is desirous of approving the annexation of the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area. Whereas the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area is a transformational economic development opportunity for the state of Indiana, Boone County, and the city, and the council supports the proposed development and use of the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area in order to attract and support new business investment with a focus on attracting advanced manufacturing, agri-science, bioscience, and other economy of the future businesses that will yield a diversified tax base and high-paying jobs, opportunities for local residents. Whereas the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area consists of 122 separate parcels containing a total of approximately 5,225 acres owned by 43 landowners, not including the adjacent public roadways. The LEAP Phase 2 annexation area is identified in Exhibits A and B. Whereas the council finds that 100% of the landowners comprising the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area have signed and filed a voluntary annexation petition to this council pursuant to Indiana Code. Whereas the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area does not include any parcel of land for which its owners have not filed and expressed written consent to this annexation. Whereas, as authorized by Section 1.8b of the city's Unified Development Ordinance, the council has received and considered a development proposal, concept, plan, which provides sufficient information about the intended development and use of the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area to justify assigning the LEAP, PRN LP, and single-family, PRN SF zoning classification to the annexation area as described in Exhibit C. Whereas the city of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a duly notice public hearing regarding a recommended zoning classification for the proposed annexation area at its regularly scheduled meeting on November 21st, 2022, and forwarded Docket 22-72 to this council with a favorable recommendation to assign the LEAP or LP and single-family or SF zoning classification to the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area. Whereas in accordance with Indiana Code, on November 28th, this council held, will hold, a duly and timely notice public hearing regarding the petition for annexation LEAP Phase 2 annexation area. Whereas the council has adopted or will adopt the fiscal plan for the annexation of the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area in accordance with Indiana Code. Whereas the council has determined, after due consideration, that the annexation satisfies the contiguity requirements pursuant to Indiana Code, as more particularly described in Exhibit D. Whereas part of the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area are contiguous to public roadways and right-ofways, and under Indiana Code, those portions of such roadways and right-ofways are to be annexed into the city. Whereas the council has considered the statutory criteria for annexation and finds that the legal process and requirements for this supervoluntary annexation have been satisfied. Now, therefore, this council finds as follows. The foregoing recitals are found to be accurate and are incorporated by reference. The annexation area, the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area generally located on the west side of Interstate 65, bordered on the west by County Road 500 West, on the south by County Road 50 South, and on the north by the Big Four Trail with a few parcels located north of the trail as depicted on Exhibits A and described in Exhibit B, is eligible for annexation into the city and is hereby declared annexed into and part of the city of Lebanon. Section 3 Contiguity, the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area meets the contiguity requirements for annexation pursuant to Indiana Code. At least 1/8 of the external boundaries of the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area coincides with and adjoins existing city boundaries. See the contiguity calculations on attached Exhibit A and the certification on Exhibit D incorporated by reference. Further, the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area consists of multiple parcels that form a single unified territory. The LEAP Phase 2 annexation area is further to include the contiguous public highways and right-ofways of the public highways which are adjacent to the LEAP Phase 2 annexation area pursuant to Indiana Code. The council district, the LEAP annexation area is hereby assigned council districts 2 and 3 and should become a part thereof immediately upon the effective date of this ordinance. Zoning, upon the recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP annexation area is hereby assigned the LEAP or LP and single-family or SF zoning classifications as shown more particularly on Exhibit C. The effective date of this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage by this council, required publication and filings pursuant to Indiana Code. by this council, required publication and filings pursuant to Indiana Code.
Thank you, Rob. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on Ordinance 2022-38. If you have public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and also please keep comments to about three minutes. Would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Mike Handverly, 1393 West Oak Street.
Is that Oak Street, Lebanon, or Zionsville?
Pardon me?
Where was Oak Street? You said Zionsville? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. I'll try to be brief. You've received by now a copy of a letter that I directed the Plan Commission with some of our concerns, as well as a short letter to the council regarding the concerns that my clients have. Let me just say, we're not as concerned with the speed of the process as it relates to annexation. You have certain statutory requirements you have to meet with regard to that, and that's not the source of the objection. The source of the objection is that this is being assigned to a classification that has been newly developed and newly implemented, and in fact, just adopted tonight, and essentially is an industrial classification with some modest and helpful changes to those in the area, but it still is a land use that is totally different than contemplated by your master plan just two years ago, which was adopted after a long period of time, investigation, public input. And this particular zoning classification, assigning all of this, part of it in the default classification of SF, but the balance of it, the large balance of it, into essentially this LEAP classification is contrary to your master plan. The other thing that I would suggest to you respectfully is that, at the time that this application was filed, the applicant was required to have a detailed concept plan set out pursuant to your statutory requirements and set out pursuant to your own Unified Development Ordinance. That was not done. Some of what you saw tonight was never part of their filing. In fact, some of what you saw tonight, the bird's eye view, wasn't even presented at the Plan Commission. We believe that that is not only improper, it violates your Unified Development Ordinance itself. Essentially, what I'm suggesting to you, and I'll elaborate just a few more minutes with regard to that, is all of this should come in as an SF classification, not just the land north of the trail, but all of it should come in with an SF classification. And why is that? Because without that, you lose leverage. You lose leverage to make sure the roads are done correctly, that the utilities are properly there. I think both Mr. Wheat and Mr. Robertson asked very good questions with regard to some of those concerns. If this is an SF classification, and somebody comes in with a proposed development, they have to seek zoning into that LEAP classification. At that time, you've got all the leverage, all the leverage you need. It's a legislative decision, you can make that decision. Without that, you lose all of your leverage with regard to how this is going to occur, when it's going to occur, whether or not it will occur in a proper timeframe and properly in all respects. You lose all of that leverage respectfully if this is zoned in the classification as currently proposed. The other concern is, we don't believe that the establishment of this zoning classification and putting the property in this classification takes into account the welfare of the residents who happen to live there, their property values, their quiet enjoyment of life, and those types of things. At least if the entire amount of the acreage had an SF classification, still be an X, just carry the SF default classification. That allows the appropriate concepts and the appropriate development plans to come before the Plan Commission and be considered as far as a rezoning that ultimately will come to the city fathers for determination. Right now, all they have to do is come in and develop under that zoning classification with those uses, and you have very little else to say about that particular classification or whether they actually can develop or not. So you lose leverage, you lose the ability to make concerned judgments on behalf of your constituents at that point. That's our concern. Ultimately, the annexation's going to occur, the only concern we have is whether it should come in under the classification that's being proposed, or whether it should come in under your default classification, which is required, by the way, unless a detailed concept plan is provided. And again, we would suggest to you, the detailed concept plan has not been submitted or provided. You know very little about ultimately what's going to exist on that property, one year from now, two years from now. If it's a default classification, SF, they would have to be able to go ahead and provide that information for you to be able to see, discern, understand, and be able to vote on with the recommendation of the Plan Commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
I'm Carrie Douglas. I live at 1300 North State Route 75, Thorntown, and I am with the Boone County Preservation Group. I spoke to you over the last annexation, and I think we all want things to go back to the way they were, right? When you guys get to hear little bits about changing five acres for town, town hall or townhomes being presented, I'm just astounded. I've gone to a lot of meetings now, I've read state codes. You guys are being asked to change the zoning for five acres, and Matt did a wonderful job. He spoke to the fire department, the street department, all of those things. But we're being presented with a 5,200-acre zoning, an annexation with no information, and we're being told that that's typical, but there's really nothing typical about this, as it's a novel project. So I'm not standing here today expecting that this isn't going to go through. I just really am here to talk more to the public about what's coming. Our group knew within hours of the annexation petition that this was mainly a catalyst of an EV manufacturing plant. So I started looking right into it. I also saw publication that Holcomb was going to announce that, but he hasn't, which has really stifled the transparency, and I am so sick of hearing that word. I can't believe I just used it, because everybody's, you know, talked about that from the beginning. So in the spirit of transparency, just some of the things, there's only a handful of EV manufacturing sites in the state, or in the country. It's very novel. I've looked into the regulations that are behind it. When I first heard about this, I thought, oh my gosh, is Lebanon's fire department and hazmat team and police, are they ready for this? And I was trying to figure out how I could talk to them and get that information, and then I realized I didn't need to, because there's nobody ready for this, no one across the country, because there are not established hazmat responses. The PUD and REA, they're doing some amazing things, but just to give you an idea of some of these facilities, they are 2.8 million square feet. In Normal, Illinois, just across the border, 3.6 million square foot factories. I was going to pull up some pictures today, but frankly, after seeing the concepts, I don't even want to look at them again. These are huge factories. We can call them high-tech, we can call them innovative, we can use all those kinds of words. We've heard lots of presentation tonight. These guys have done a great job of telling you their concept, telling you what they want, but the reality of it is it's a factory. Lilly is a chemical processing plant, and this community needs to know that. We need to be talking about it openly. We need to know what's going to come. There's not going to be EV batteries. Okay, well, how do they get in the cars? They're going to be stored at the EV factory. That's going to be right across the highway. 250-foot buildings, that's what's allowed. That's not what we want, but that's allowed.
Just three minutes.
The cold storage, how long did they get? The cold storage is 150 feet tall. The buffers and all of those setbacks, that is great. I applaud the work that's being done, but we need to be open about what's happening. This is going to forever change our lifestyle, this is forever going to change the landscape. And I'm not talking about the world, the country, where I live, the city also. The city is going to change. There's 60 holes, 60 families in this annexation that are not being brought into the city. You guys said this summer that the Lilly annexation was a test run, a trial run. Lilly hasn't even purchased the ground yet. They are going to submit some plans, but the only money being spent is our tax dollars. That's it. There's no investors that have signed anything, and they're telling you that you have to push all of this through, and you have to go with general industrial zoning. Thank God we have the LEAP.
It's four minutes.
The LEAP coming in. But that's still just in its infancy. We just saw pictures tonight. Did you guys see the bird's eye view? That's what they want to do to our community here, and we need to take the time to get answers. What kind of hazmat training and equipment are you going to have to have for Lebanon's fire department and the police? And I don't know how much time they got, but they do get to come up and answer questions, and we don't get to respond to that again.
Any additional public comment?
My name is Jim Love. I live at 3150 North State Route 52, and that is in Lebanon, Indiana. I want to commend you guys on a tremendous job earlier tonight on voting to fund the Shalom House and the Lebanon Welfare League, because I think that shows that you guys understand that feeding people is very important. And so as much as I'm very excited about that vote and the fact that you guys committed funds that direction, I'm equally as disappointed that we're talking about destroying a bunch of U.S. farm ground in the effort to bring foreign companies to Boone County, to bring a few jobs to Boone County, where we already have a booming agricultural industry. If you realize, and I sent this information to you, and some of you may have looked at it, some of you may have put it in the round file, 10% of the earth's arable land is the United States. Of that arable land, 17% of it is considered prime farmland. Where we are sitting today is prime farmland. So this is part of the 17%. Now, people say, well, you can just move up the road and buy some more land, or the number four in the United States is Nebraska, grow corn in Nebraska. Guess what it takes to grow corn in Nebraska, folks? It takes water. You've got to pump water out of the ground. There's only two ways to get water out of the ground. Either pump it with diesel fuel, or you pump with electricity, two other commodities that we either don't have enough of right now, or we are worried about running out of. So there's three commodities right there it takes to grow corn elsewhere. We can grow corn right here in Boone County at the highest level of anybody in the nation without any additional water source. And I'll guarantee you, if somebody stood at one of these mics one day and said, by God, we'll never use all the water in the Colorado River, it's infinite supply. But there is a finite supply of water, and no matter what anybody tells you on some kind of pie in the sky plan on getting water here, the water is going to be a big deal. It's not going to be a big deal to the people in this room, but it's going to be a big deal to my grandkids. And I don't want to leave my grandkids a mess because somebody decided it would be a great idea to bring a German car plant here, that they probably wouldn't let them build in Germany because they don't want to gobble up their ground, because they starved during World War II. They don't want to ever do that again. So gobbling up farmland with big setbacks and pretty berms and big plants from foreign companies is a horrible idea, and this annexation is just the gateway to do that as well. We've got 188,000 jobs, $14.9 billion is what Ag puts into this, and it adds countless benefits to the community. These farmers come to town, they buy products and services, they do business in town. Do you think that somebody from a foreign car company is going to come to town and buy widgets and hoozits from Gilman's? Probably not. They've got a procurement officer who's going to order that stuff in. 1.3 million acres are lost in the United States, folks. That is about five counties, five Indiana average counties, a year that we're losing. Farmers have, by the time we get to 2050, farmers are going to have about 9.3 billion people to feed and 36 million fewer acres to do that on. Let that soak in. That's a whole lot of people that have to be fed on a whole lot less acreage.
Three minutes, Jim.
The Lilly Plan, if you want to know what the Lilly Plan looks like, the one that we can't see, they show it downtown on McCarty Street on their monitors. If anybody wants to challenge me on that, I know two firsthand people that say, oh yeah, it's in the cafeteria, we can see on the monitors. So they know what it looks like, we can't see what it looks like. You've got no water, you're going to have reduced tax revenue because these folks have a 20-year build-out and no plans to pay any taxes. If you think running out of fuel and having high fuel prices is a problem, wait until you get to the cost of food, where you can't afford to feed the population. It won't be good to be at the top.
Further public comment?
My name is Peggy Daggy, and I live at 2005 West 250 North, Lebanon. And I know there's been a lot of conversation about the water this evening. IEDC has explained things about the water itself, but one of the solutions that has been proposed to supply water for the LEAP project has been to bring water down from the Wabash in Tippecanoe County, Lafayette. It's estimated to cost $1 to $2 billion of taxpayer money with no real plan in place. The displacement of in-place drainage, changes in the environment, the three- to five-year build-out, just to name a few, have not been addressed, nor has the total amount of water been determined. But studies are being done. How can you develop a project with no clear picture of where it will get water? Lorraine Nyes, professor of environmental and ecological engineering at Purdue University, says, how can you do a study if you don't know how much water you want to take out? We don't have a good picture of the level to which we are already using our water resources. If you don't have a good grasp of that, it's easy to keep thinking that you can expand economic development as if water supply is infinite, when in fact, it is not. The big question that needs to be answered is, if we take this money from the Wabash, or this water from the Wabash, how's it going to affect the Wabash? Is it going to dry up? That needs to be talked about. We are concerned that the speed at which this project is being implemented is going to cause many problems in the future. On October 24th, at the city council meeting, an MOU between the IEDC and the Lebanon Utilities to pre-reserve water for the Lilly Project was proposed and voted upon by the council. In Jeff Jacobs' presentation, he repeatedly referred to the need for MGDs of water, million gallons per day. At one point, he indicated 864,000 MGDs of water to be pre-reserved, and another mention was 864 MGDs. This presentation was given a unanimous vote by the city council. 864 million gallons of water per day is not possible, let alone 864,000 MGDs of water. The concern here is the city officials are pushing this project through so fast, they don't even know what they're voting on. The minutes reflect 864,000 gallons per day. But the proposal given and voted on was for a million gallons per day, as is evidenced in the online YouTube recording of the meeting. With these costs and unanswered questions, the Boone County Preservation Group believes the proposed annexation should be tabled until more clarity can be presented. Thank you.
Further public comment? And I will say, I think it was a misspeak on his point. It was, it's .8 MGD, not 864 MGD.
I'm Brian Daggy, 2005 West 250 North, Lebanon. I'm appearing here today on behalf of the Boone County Farm Bureau Board of Directors. I'm president of the board and speaking to represent agricultural interests in Boone County. After careful study, the following are key points we are concerned with and ask that you carefully consider as you evaluate the annexation proposal in front of you. First and foremost, we're concerned with the loss of prime farmland. You've heard some statistics already. We believe farmland should be protected, and while we understand development may happen, we are for smart, responsible, and economically viable development. The proposed Phase II LEAP project and its zoning designations do not meet these parameters. Too much is unknown. We support the continued development of the proposed PUD. This proposed annexation should not be approved until the PUD is in place, as was originally agreed to, at least in verbal conversations in mid-year. With the development of the PUD, Farm Bureau believes that the county must use the time and money invested in the PUD as a first step in updating the entire comprehensive plan for Boone County. The potential impacts of the LEAP projects and ongoing development with the county indicates the county's comprehensive plan is outdated. We believe that Lebanon and Boone County need to work together to ensure proper financing for these planning updates to protect the citizens in this county. Boone County Farm Bureau is willing to represent agriculture during these comprehensive plan discussions. The proposed rapid adoption of the Phase II LEAP annexation of 5,225 acres, occurring less than six months after the Phase I adoption of more than 1,400 acres, we feel too many questions remain unanswered. Some of you have asked the same questions. First and foremost, where will the water come from? Who will pay for it? Who will pay for it? Path answers that it will be the IDC and end users are insufficient, both in details and protections for the community, what other services might be required. These answers are needed. Phase 2 needs to slow down until these answers are known. Transparency, we feel it must be increased. We recognize that business development is a complicated endeavor, but that doesn't excuse the major lack of details, possible services needed, or other pertinent details, just to meet the ability to attract business. Farmers, landlords, and the residents of this county deserve to hear sufficient details to allow them to plan their own future. Farm Bureau believes that zoning needs to recognize farmland as a natural resource and should have protections for farmland preservation in the planning process. Spot zoning classifications of prime farmland at the request of IEDC is irresponsible. It contains significant financial risk to the sitting county without knowing what types of manufacturing and businesses may locate in the district, along with what specific services and costs that may be required. We are concerned that the state is driving local zoning decisions. Zoning is local. This is a blatant violation of the concept of home rule, which is something that we cherish in most of our Indiana counties. We should control our future and not have the state trying to dictate it to us. In closing, Farm Bureau believes that proper zoning is needed, not spot zoning. Careful planning zoning will allow the farmers, landlords, and residents the ability to make long-term plans for their lives and businesses. We welcome the opportunity, welcome the opportunity to be part of this process.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Kim Love, and I live at 3150 North State Room 52. So the people at Lebanon and Boone County have a lot of questions about this IEDC project, and they deserve to have those answers before their area is radically changed forever. So how many manufacturing plants can this city support? Some of the proposed types of manufacturing have lots of pollutants. Why would we want those in this area? Who's going to pay for the enlargement of the city's infrastructure, like the water plant, the sewage treatment plant, the road maintenance, and the electrical? Why is the IDC getting special zoning accommodations that taxpayers locally can't have? Where is all the water going to come from? After a summer and a fall of drought, that seems like a really big deal. Why aren't these companies required to submit building plans to the zoning boards like they would anywhere else? Who is going to pay the taxes on this land when they don't have end users sitting on them? How are our schools supposed to make up for the loss of the tax support to continue providing our kids with competitive educations? So I'd like to hear the answers to those questions, but I have an answer for the mayor's question that you asked a few months back, which is, why wouldn't, why would you move here and not expect it to burst out in growth, just like all the other north sides of Indianapolis? So when Jim's parents, grandparents bought the farm we live on in 1945, they had just finished making 52 from a two-lane road to a four-lane road. I-65 wasn't even started until 1958, and it wasn't to the Lebanon area until 1970. We built our homes 17 years ago, before thousands of acres along I-65 were sold off for development and Stonegate on the outskirts of Zinsville was just started. But it was even harder to imagine the massive takeover of a huge part of our county by the state government. So as a parent, we all have to take care of the well-being of our children and those that rely on us, and the most important word I felt like I ever used with my own children was the word "no." You guys need to take care of this county and this city, and if you need to tell the IDC "no" to part of their plan, then please use that word. You do have the power. We have heard you all say, we can't stop this, it's beyond us. It's not. The word "no" needs to be used.
Mrs. Love, if you want to send me those questions, I can answer the ones that I can for you. But no one's sending, well, people that have sent me emails, I have responded to, but I've received anything from you, so. Next.
Before my three minutes start, could somebody pull that conceptual map back up on the computer for me, please? Thank you.
Which one do you want?
Colored conceptual map of...
This one.
There you go, yes. Thank you. Yeah, there we go. Okay. Glenn Beazey, I live at 71 South 200 West, just on the outskirts of Lebanon, which is proposed to be in this super voluntary annexation, which I propose to you as wordplay, because first of all, I want to point something out on this map. Concept subject to change. Okay, that's very important to me. So you're telling me that I live in this area, that I am, I have a voluntary right to be annexed or not to be annexed. Well, I just noticed something about this tonight. It looks to me like US 52 comes down and goes right down to my road, 200 West, and it's going to carry on through. That alarms me. We just bought our property a year ago, had our dream, on the outskirts of town, see all kinds of wildlife. It's fairly quiet. Looks to me like that's all going to change now. You know, another thing, the business park, if you look at the signs and the road on 200 West, no trucks. There are two structures on that road that are not rated for big trucks, but guess what? Big trucks come out of that business park every day, more than 50 probably, breaking that down. And they're not supposed to be there, but who's enforcing that? No one. So now we're talking about doing all these changes in those houses in there that there was an interest showed to our homes and all the homes on our road at one time, and guess what? That interest has disappeared, and now I see why, because that looks to me like that's going to be eminent domain. Thanks for killing my dream. Thank you.
Jeff Newman, currently reside at 218 North Park Street here in Lebanon. Actually own a home at 195 North 200 West, so just a little bit north of Mr. Beasley. Bought that home from my parents, who built it in 1976, when it was all just farmland, fields, woods, other farmhouse and neighbors. Not sure how or when, but somehow or another, the county says that that was owned industrial at some point. Don't know how those 16 houses along 32 and 200 West became industrial, but that's what the county map shows. So a couple of questions. Water, I think it was mentioned earlier, nobody dreamed the Colorado River would be drained. I forget if it was Mr. Wheat or Mr. Robertson, talked about the Great Lakes. Nobody dreams that they'll be drained. Figure it out. Where's that water going to end up coming from? They're dredging the Mississippi this year because there's not enough depth or enough water for all the barges to get through, because it's already dropping down. I did want to point out earlier, like it has been pointed out, so sorry if I'm repeating, Shalom House, the Boys and Girls Club and the other things, those are part of what you're responsible for, taking care of the citizens that you have been elected by. Okay? So as citizens, currently I am a citizen, when I move out there, I'm not part of the voluntary annexation. Never got a call, no, nothing, unless it was from Alex, I by Holmes, you know, I don't think that was him calling from IEDC. So don't know, just been skipped over. Business park is here, then you go five miles out this way, or actually, I guess it's three miles out this way, it's still, you know, annexed. Our property, no phone call, nothing. The MOU that you guys passed with Lebanon Utilities, I believe one of the addendum items was the state will not be paying any taxes on property they own. Okay? So they gave the 21 million initially, and they'll be giving out their monies. If this is a 10 or 15-year build-out and the state owns the property, are they going to pay any taxes against that for the services that are being provided for Lebanon City I think you clarified .8 million gallons per day, not 846, not 84, and certainly not 840,000 million gallons a day. That's still a tenth of the 10 million that's being proposed would be built up or supplied in the first couple of years. 10%, you know, what happens if there is an EV plant or whatever comes in that needs a whole lot more water? Okay?
Three minutes.
My last thing, I think Mr. Bontrager told the planning commission, they couldn't even dream this was happening. Well, I think that part of why they couldn't dream this would be happening now, two years after the plan, is because it's kind of inconceivable that this would be happening. That's the way most of us feel, or at least a lot of us that are here tonight. I've not heard anybody with voluntary annexation this meeting or the other one. So I guess I pose to you, it's your responsibility, you need to be cautious, do your due diligence. You got to dream for Lebanon, but don't put us in a nightmare.
Cindy Holmes, I live on the north edge of Boone County, but this is my home. I was born and raised in Lebanon, and it's still my home. And I lost my notes. Earlier, Mr. Bontrager spoke several times about how the new businesses wouldn't proceed here until they were sure the city was behind the project with zoning they want to see. Well, that's nice, but it's not city property yet. It's still Boone County. It's county land, and it's full of people who don't want this to happen. They don't want their rural area, their rural history, lost this quickly especially. This county land, the so-called voluntary requests for annexation, we all know, were actually people who were, will no longer be residents in that area, and they, they were all highly incentivized to request the annexation. That is not voluntary. It is wordplay, as someone earlier said. They won't be affected by the proposed zoning changes and the annexation. The state has made suggestions about possible use, but we all know how things don't often turn out the way that they are advertised by the state, and how much our government has not done what we've asked, or what they've said they would do. Based on the way this project was thrust upon the community in secrecy, I don't trust them to actually follow through with anything they're proposing. I don't, also don't think that Lebanon needs 20-story-high glass high-rises to help it maintain its rural history or heritage, a rural setting, which is what drew most people to this area in the first place. And in response to the comment about easing traffic congestion on highways with new interchanges in roads, they skipped right over that idea that someone almost pointed out here about not connecting 52 with, over the interstate as it is now. 52 is going to go straight down to 32, losing our north access from the northwest part of the county to come across the interstate to get into the north edge of town. If we have to go down farther on 52 and come in, we're going to hit into the city traffic that we're all trying to avoid coming in that way anyway. So that's a proposal that they're still looking at about where that's going to go. They need to be paying attention to what the county needs out there now and not eliminate our access. They're already making us do a lot of changes that we're not liking.
Ma'am, just for clarification, they are proposing a new interchange in the 300 North area, so you would still be able to cross north of 30?
They commented the other night that that would not connect to 52.
That, it would.
For now, yes?
It always, always has.
That's not what you said.
Yes, sir.
Chuck, 2350 Elizabel Road, Lebanon. I really don't have any dog in this fight or anything, and I know there's a lot of things going on, but I do have two questions. I won't be here three minutes. First of all, all the presentations and things, the graphs and pictures and illustrations and all, is that available to the John Q. Public?
Yes, it is.
Okay, where do, where do they get that?
We've posted on the city website and then also in the planning office.
This is on the city website right now?
I believe so.
Couldn't find anything yesterday.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I mean, can you go in here and get to, get a hard copy of it?
You can get a, I mean, hit us Ben that. Talk with Ben at the end, he can...
Okay, first. Second one is, Mr. Andorley, which is representing this group, I personally feel like he deserves more than three minutes because he's not just representing himself. I would, I would...
I gave him six.
Okay, that's fine.
He finished his own comments.
I would like to make a suggestion about maybe the council calling a special meeting between now and the next vote. Let him have 30 minutes. He's highly recognized in his field. I've seen Mike do other things for county meetings and zoning changes and things like that, and I've got a lot of respect for him. As a matter of fact, some friends of mine need some zoning change. I told, and they were out of county, I said, that's the guy you need to talk to. But I don't know Mike personally, but I just think he deserves more time to represent his group than six minutes.
Good evening, Jim. Stuart Scholter for 18 West Manhattan, Lebanon. My son celebrated his 25th year post-utero this month, and when he was in the womb, I bought a house out at 300 West 132, thinking that, hey, this will be a good place to buy because industry's coming this way, and it's going to boost my value. And I thought they'd be there in 10 years, so I was a bit off on that. But whether I live in town or still out there, my comments would be the same. Point for clarification first, this is a super annexation petition. 100% of the properties to be annexed is voluntary, correct?
Correct.
And like we heard on the low opening, and I did ask on Facebook for anybody to come forward, heard nothing, was anybody compelled by use of force, you know, firearm to the head, anything like that, to sign?
No.
And you did have those in writing? Okay, well, I think we can dispense with it not being voluntary then. Something I've not heard brought to your attention yet this evening is that this is a voluntary annexation petition. In general, we follow a democratic principle. You're elected to represent the people, and apparently, 100% of these people have asked that you be annexed them into the city. And you all know, as much as I am a fan of the courts, that if you don't voluntarily annex them, that the next step, if they would still like to be annexed, is to take it to the courts. So I'm encouraging you to consider what the role of the people who are seeking the annexation is, and what the potential next step is if you don't annex them. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Hi there. My name is Tracy Heiney, 4520 West 300 North. I'm largely going to talk about the will of the people in town, the rest of the people that I think should have a say in doubling the size of the town. Sorry, sorry. In the Lebanon Plant Commission meeting last week, Mr. Bontrager said, quote, frankly, there's a lot of risk to putting the design together for 11,000 acres before you know if zoning is in place. And absolutely, that's, that's a huge amount of risk, and, and somebody else mentioned, you know, the risk to the developers. But there's a huge amount of risk to... But there's a huge amount of risk to everybody in Lebanon, and no one seems to be concerned about that, so I just kind of want to bring it up. Without knowing much about the future of the ground, like Lilly and Lafayette, I don't know, you know, how I know about Lilly being up in Lafayette, but they were just up there like 20 years, right? So I looked into like average lifespans of companies, found a BBC article, quote, "The average lifespan of a company listed in the S&amp;P 500 Index of leading U.S. companies has decreased by more than 50 years in the last century, from 67 years in the 1920s to just 15 years today." This was according to Professor Richard Foster from Yale University. I just really think we should think about whether we want to bring a company in for 15 years to destroy land, you know, farm ground that's been around for over 100 years. You know, there are farmers down the street from me, you know, whose, their lands been in their family since 1901, and they're, they've said no, but they're in all of this area. They actually got a Heritage, Hoosier Heritage Award from Governor Holcomb, because he said he really appreciated the, the history of Ag in our community. That was in 2015, I believe. So the risk to us, why, why has Mayor Gentry never seemed concerned about whether this is what your constituents want? Now, to your credit, Mayor Gentry has been very communicative over social media, and he doesn't need to do that. He and I have had a conversation online about having a poll, and I'm a broken record about this, I admit. But I just don't understand why we're not asking for public feedback. And it's been said that, you know, we have, that REA has been reaching out for, for public comment. I just want to show you guys what that looks like. And I don't know if you've seen that request anywhere. So, that's really hard, I know, sorry. But essentially, right up here, there's a little comment bubble. And like a PDF that you have from...
It's three minutes.
Where you put in a little comment, you put in a little comment. That's what they're saying is asking for feedback from the community. And that's commenting on a document. It's not asking any questions, multi-choice questions, yes, no questions, any of the sort. Also, in my conversation with Mayor Gentry, he talks about not being able to see, you know, what other people's votes might be. And in this document, sorry. Shows, if I, if I click on there, I can see Victoria Westler's comment. So this is what's out there as accepting public comment. And I first heard about it at the Boone County Commissioners Meeting a couple of weeks ago. And while all of these meetings are really riveting, there's not a lot of people at those meetings, and no one else that I know of knew anything about this website.
Four minutes.
Nothing. Just two more things, I guess. One, the, the comparing the 10,000 acres to the Duke Development, we're talking 11, 10, 11,000 acres. Okay? Duke is 1,700 acres. All of Enson is 1,700 acres. This is not standard process. Everyone is saying this is just the way it should be done. This is the way it's done. This is not standard at all. So I don't know why we're trying to treat it standard, even with less regulation. Last thing, another picture, is just to give an idea of how big 10,000 acres is, because it's really hard to understand that, at least for me. So if you take 334 in Zionsville to the north, 65 to the west, 865, 465 to the south, and 31 to the east, that's 10,000 acres.
Five minutes.
And that's huge. Thank you for your time.
Additional public comment?
Alan Moeller, excuse me, 7015 North Craig Avenue. My primary occupation is farming, but I also wear other hats. I am, have been chairman of the board of directors of the sixth largest privately-held company in the state of Indiana. And when we, we have become that because we have done mergers and purchases. Anytime we do any of those, we do due diligence, and this is what we're trying to do today. But we have not heard much, nearly enough, due diligence for this size of a project. I've got a set of questions here, a lot of them have been covered, but I'll give them to you. One thing I would like to clarify, they're talking about long-term buildouts, 20 years, 50 years? That is short-term. How long has man walked on two legs? How long is man going to be on this earth? 100 years? That is short-term. Let's get our minds set in the right direction here. Agriculture will be here for whatever time man doesn't screw it up. Land does not depreciate. It does not get less productive over time. Factories depreciate. They get out of date. I challenge them to tell me a factory building that has lasted for 100 years, and I have not heard anything back. So 100 years is a long time for a factory. Okay. This is a couple of questions that have not been covered. Where will the wastewater be put? When will, I can't read here, I've got to take my glasses off. Who will be responsible for these factories' demolition when manufacturing buildings become obsolete? Do they change in market demand? Is it going to be the city? Is it going to be IDC? And then who will now own that land after these buildings will be torn down? Because they will be torn down, there's no doubt. Another question too I had, why is IDC going to green spaces instead of building on brown fields? That, I bet I've had 100 people ask me that question, and I would like to have an answer for that one, because if they would decide to rebuild on old sites, I think they would be looked very favorably upon the city or the people of Indiana.
Joyce Douglas, 409 North Meridian Street, Lebanon, Indiana. I want to say and take just a second, and that would be it, and say what he said, the attorney. That's who you should listen to. He's got a wealth of information. Planning Commission meeting, no conceptual plan presented, advanced pace leap. Why is it rushed? It's money. It's a lot of tax money, but a lot goes back to the state. And what the state, annexation comes at a price. The state will handle what the Lilly industrial buildings require to a certain extent. They will not cover most city capital improvements of water, wastewater, Dick, you know, stormwater, drainage, all the infrastructure updates, the maintenance, existing streets, sidewalks, non-capital expenses. When you annex, it costs every taxpayer. And so the city people that aren't here today, and they're in the non-annexed areas, they don't understand. It comes at a price. You have to increase fire, you have to increase police staff, you have to increase EMTs, you have to give all the services you give to everyone else. That comes at a price. Who's paying that? Street lighting, trash, road maintenance. You know, it used to be our comprehensive plan included farmland and the preservation of farmland. What happened to that? I don't understand why it's developer-led, and instead of government-led, local-led, mayor-led. I understand it's money, but you know, agribusiness, that's money. These people paying taxes every year, that's money. Property taxes, that's money. Don't forget your farmers, don't forget your city. I, I just don't understand, you know, large lot development will be piecemealed out, and then the comprehensive plan, what will you do? Zoning, variances? It all comes at, to suit who? The developer? Yep? You're forgetting who, who elected you.
Three minutes, Joyce.
All right. The only other thing I have is, and listen carefully, you're going to have, because they get the foot in the door, 70 miles of building after building after building. And you look out when you're traveling and see all that farmland and see the beauty of it, it feeds you too. So, open land, agribusiness, and wildlife refuge require little public infrastructure than industrial build. Industrial businesses cost more than they pay, and farmland pays more than it costs. So, and water, I'm not even going to get into water, but you better do your homework on water, people. Just go to Tippecanoe and ask them, call it the utilities. And Mayor, I would like an exact figure of how much water that Lilly will be requiring from us, and wastewater. Thank you.
Stuart, we don't really let people come up twice. No, we don't, we don't, we don't let people come back up. Sorry. Additional public comment? Okay. Seeing none, at this time I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2022-38. Any final questions, comments from council?
Lot of stuff. We appreciate the comments, and we'll just do our due diligence. Thank you for being here.
That concludes what I have for new business. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay, move on to claims. Are there any motions concerning the claims?
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
Motion to pay, is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Any announcements to discussion?
Nope.
Are there any motions to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? All right, we are adjourned. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, December 12th, at 7:15 p.m. Have a good night.